I guess. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would you like to do a pledge of allegiance?
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Um, Derek Walter did come in today and ask if he could get on the agenda this evening now for 10:15.
Did you hear that? Don said Derek Walter plans to come in at 10:15 on the agenda, Alexis.
Oh, good. Okay, yeah, we need to hear from him anyhow.
Okay. And there is some mail. Alexis, do you want me to go over that?
Please do.
Uh, we just had a few... Well, we have this changed contract with Wendell Solder for modifying the acreage for that he farms at the landfill up there.
Did you agree?
Yeah, well, it shows an Exhibit A of where they just modified the acreage and shows a map of... I think we took five acres back, approximately, or something. And Jim looked at it and I looked at it. I think that looks fine to me. Have you get the chance to look at it?
Yes, I mean, I remember...
Four and a half acres. Four and a half acres.
It just got finalized and he was gonna get it signed.
Yeah, Wendell signed it already. And I've reviewed it. Do you have... You want us to approve that now, or do you want to review it in person?
No, I think you guys have a handle on it, so we just need a motion to, um, sign it.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the amended lease agreement with Wendell Solder for his farmland up at the landfill area. And the legal description up there is, uh... I'll get it here. It's the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter in Section 34, Township 11, and Range 8 in Lincoln County, Kansas, except land in the north end on the west side of existing cells 1 and 2 for a total of 30.25 acres. And then there's a map designating it on the back. So I make a motion to approve this amended lease.
And to sign it as well?
Yeah, we'll have to re-sign it. I don't... Do you want to sign it when you get here later Monday next week, Alexis? Or do you want me to, or Jim, or what?
I think you can sign it as the... You were newly appointed as the, um...
Vice.
The vice chair, so I think you can sign it.
But, okay, that's fine. I just wonder what you want to do.
I second it, yeah.
Jim just seconded it.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the new amended agreement. Are there any further questions? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And Don, do you want me to sign this right here, this lease? Okay. Okay, we've signed it here and I'll give it back to Don. We had a few other, uh... A little bit of mail, Alexis, uh... For, uh... We had a bill from Lincoln Building Supply for the Lincoln Park Manor. It says an ivory 28... I don't know what it is. Doesn't really say. It's a 20... It's a 45... Two of them, $45.98 for, uh... I don't know what it is. Ivory 20 amp. Maybe it's a... Looks like it's an electrical receptor. I think it's a 20 amp receptors. I'm not sure, though. They give you all these weird descriptions. It doesn't define them very well. And then also, we had a bill from Phoenix Air Supply for wood electric seat exchanger hinge. So it's a hinge. That's $17.07 for Lincoln Park Manor also.
Those sound like issues this building, so we should just... You could sign those.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Uh... Should we ask for a motion to approve?
No, unless there's an objection, I think you can sign them.
I'll just... Should I just sign them on the bottom, or is that what you do?
Yep, I always just initial at the bottom.
Okay. All right, I did that. And then we don't... That's it, really, for mail. Uh, well, Don passed us out these, uh... We have some... Well, we do have some more mail here for the... A letter to the Dane Hanson Foundation, Board of Commissioners, wishing to permit this letter to support the North Central Flynn Hills area aging... On aging grant application to replace the HVAC system in their main office. So we got a grant request here to Dane Hanson for, uh... Helping to replace their HVAC system in their main office here.
Um, I read that email that Don sent, and Don, you did a nice job putting that letter together. I guess... I'm a little concerned because they didn't come to us in person. They just basically, by mail, requested that we endorse them for a grant. And I was under the impression that that's the reason why we pay yearly dues, is for them to appropriately manage their budget. And I don't understand why their budget wouldn't include repairs and maintenance for their own facility. It seems to me like a lot of these organizations keep upping their funding and creating new jobs for people, and then they let their infrastructure fall apart. So then they say, "Oh, please help, we don't have a heating system anymore." I'm just... I'm getting a little tired of that, but that's me personally.
So I guess... I'm just reading it over here. I guess it's... They want our support to apply for a grant, the Flynn Hills area on aging, to fix what's the HVAC here at our Lincoln Senior Center?
Mm-mm. The one down in Manhattan, is what I understand it.
Well, why, yeah. Why would...
From home offices.
That's not our responsibility. They, uh... Yeah, why are...
Well, and I know this is asking for a letter...
Well, we give... They give services to Lincoln County. It's just an endorsement for them to apply for a grant that they pay for.
It's just an endorsement that we support. It's just a support that we show to support on their grant application.
I know, I'm just saying, they're asking us to support them asking for donations when they're already a government-funded entity. I'm just... I'm personally against that, but you guys can surely make a motion to approve that and sign it.
It's really not a donation. It's just a grant from Dane Hanson, Alexis.
But I'm saying, Dane Hanson is privately funded.
Right, well, they are private, yeah.
They're asking private money to pay for a heating and cooling system inside of a building that is government-funded. I just, um... I mean, it happens. I know, I just...
Well, and I guess all they're wanting from us is moral support primarily, that we support that. And hopefully that would give them a little more ammunition to get a grant, I guess.
Right, right, that's exactly.
What do you think, Jim? You have any input on this?
Yeah, there are no incorrect or unsupported statements in that letter, as far as I can tell. And if they can get a grant, I say good for them. I support it.
They provided that letter. I just put it on your letter.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Won't anybody think I did that?
Well, and I kind of... And I agree with Jim here. I know, Alexis, I understand what you're saying, too, that they're, you know, wanting to get private money for public, uh, use, but...
What I'm saying is, they presented us their budget this year. They asked for the same dollar amount as they requested last year. All of these counties give money to them every year. And I would like to say, why don't you have enough funding to support your own infrastructure when you get funding every year? That's all I'm saying. We can... I'm certainly going to go along with the board if you want to support the letter.
Okay.
These are the kind of questions that the commission needs to ask when they present their budget then, is what I'm saying.
Sometimes your heating and cooling things go out and you're unprepared for a budget that you've always had the same outcome. That's all I can say.
Right, but I'm... I understand what you're saying, Cindy, but I'm unaware of the county asking Dane Hanson to paint the courthouse. We're gonna have to do that with outside grant money. And, I mean, it's the same concept, I guess, but we should be prepared for those things.
I think Kelly Larson was in here and said that she wanted your approval to ask for a Dane Hanson grant. So I guess that would be the same thing.
Yeah, but Kelly Larson's part of our county operation. North Central Flynn Hills, Kansas ain't.
Is it gonna... Is the Flynn Hills Area Agency main location even gonna qualify? Because it's in Riley County, isn't it?
Yeah.
Doesn't Dane Hanson have to be post-rock county?
That's probably why they're asking for a letter of support.
Yeah, they're asking for everybody that they affect to support asking for a grant.
They think that'd help give them some ammunition with Dane Hanson.
Every grant, yeah, you have to get some.
Supporters, yeah.
Letters of support.
I'm not against it, Jim. Will you want to... You want to make a motion?
I move that we sign the letter and send it on.
Jim moved to sign the letter and send it on, Alexis. I guess I'll second that.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded to sign the support letter for North Central Flynn Hills Area Agency on Aging, their grant request to Dane Hanson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do we need to initial this, too, or whatever?
Sign it.
On the back?
You go ahead and sign it.
Just one copy, yeah.
Oh, does Jim and I sign it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and we have another, uh... Another letter, uh... With the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services.
This would be what I drafted according to our motion at the last meeting when I said that I believe we should contact the department and, um...
Yeah, and ask them about the license issue, right?
Did you guys get a chance to read it?
No, I just got it. I just got it here now. Let me glance through it quicker. Did you read this, Jim?
Yeah.
Do you have any... I've read it now, Alexis. I think it's pretty good about what we've been talking about.
Well, I'm not sure. It says our... First and foremost, our main goal is to acquire the license. Well, I don't think that's our main goal. Our main goal is to ensure that the nursing home stays open. And I'm not sure that the county ought to be in the business of competing with private enterprise running nursing homes. I think we would dearly love to have Laura or somebody from the State Agency Service come down and talk to us, but there's a lot more we need to talk to them about than that license. I don't know if we can get the license if we want the license. There may be a lot of other issues we need to discuss first with them.
Okay. Far as this particular issue is concerned and all the money and time we have spent with Mr. Hay, we had hired him to do exactly what this letter says, which is discuss with the government entity how we go about obtaining... If you read it, I said, can we get a new license? Can we be added on to the current license? You know, and explain the change of... The change of ownership paperwork issue in there. As far as choosing to engage with another tenant, that has nothing to do with the K-DAD department. The only thing that they have control over is the license. The Secretary of K-DAD cannot tell us who we rent to, how we rent, what we charge, anything like that. It only has to do with the licensing of the building. So when I stated our first and foremost goal, that's not for me to state that to the public. That's me stating it to the Secretary of K-DAD. What is our goal with her? Because she only has so many roles she can play in our scenario.
Well, if she issues a license, does that solve our problem, or is that just the first step in solving our problem?
Well, I think... I think it would help solve it. Go ahead, Alexis, I'm coming.
In my opinion, that solves our problem completely because if we had been forward-thinking enough a few years ago to get on the license when we allowed the new tenant to rent from us, we wouldn't have the issues we have today. Because the only reason why this tenant is... Can ask us for money is because the threat is that when the license leaves, the facility closes. But if the license stays, many other counties were aware enough to have their names on the license. And so when they bring in these temporary management companies, they don't have to worry about the license coming and going. So when we... If and when we can own the license or have ownership in it, that takes away the risk of any management firm or tenant, such as Grace Team right now, that takes away their ability to basically hold it hostage, is how I feel the situation has turned out.
And I agree. We've talked about a lot of this, Jim. And I agree with Alexis on this because the license is everything right now because, like she said, if we did have that license, we could let the lease run... We could get us... Right now, we could plan on just getting a new administrator, possibly. And then we could... Wouldn't worry about the current tenant because we have a license for operation. And that's... And he has that now, and that's... He... You gotta have that to operate that nursing home. That's the bottom line here.
But if we acquire the license, then we are de facto the nonprofit board that's running the nursing home. We, the three county commissioners.
That's not true.
Who would hire the new administrator?
Well, we would.
Uh-huh. And who would tell the new administrator what to do?
Well, we could get a board. We could like the hospital board. We could appoint a nursing home board so that we don't have to micromanage it as commissioners. But the thing is, Alexis has a good point. We have control then. One of the fears is, Jim, if we get a private company with a private license, that may be okay, but we're out from under all this. But if they don't make any money, they say, "We're gonna close it down next year," or about three years from now, we're gonna have no say then over it. And, uh, that's the... And we don't want to see it close. I don't want to see it close.
But do you want to guarantee that it stays open as a county commission? It may not be a viable nursing home.
Well, that's true. Based on...
Okay, I can agree with your statement, Mr. Abelman, but I would just like to point out that this particular letter, the only thing I would like to address right now is, Madam Secretary, are you able to do something about the license? And like I said, I don't think that the K-DAD's rule is to come in and tell us how to run our nursing home, if it's viable, what the business situation is. It's only the licenser issue. And our main concern is, can we be grandfathered in with these narrow hallways, et cetera, et cetera, because our building was built in the 1960s? I mean, they have all these new regulations by which we cannot abide. Are we able to continue under a different license? Or will they go ahead and change relations? And if you notice, I mentioned in there the word "financial insolvency" because that is the buzzword, as far as they're concerned, when they must step in to salvage a nursing home. As far as the future of it, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I think that's a discussion for us in our county. That's not a discussion for us with the Department of Aging and Disabilities.
All that I understand, and I agree that we can send this letter forward, but we really, really need to have us a meeting here in the very near future about that nursing home and decide some policy and plans.
Didn't we set aside an entire afternoon, Don? Didn't we set that aside for the first week in August?
Yes.
Okay.
So we already have that on the schedule, not next week, but one more week after that, which would be great. We could potentially hear back in the meantime if we can send this letter forward today.
Well, I move we sign and send the letter today.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the letter to the Secretary of K-DAD? All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Non-opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And, uh, that then is all we have right now here. There's Derek. Derek's outside. They will... Well, you'll get to him for later. That's all the mail we have and the letters we have. I know, uh, we need to sign this, don't we?
Yeah.
Well, I have about 20 actors. Was Derek gonna come in at 10:15? Is that...
Did you have the other letter?
I don't know. We... Maybe we'll get him in here. Maybe we won't.
To Dane Hanson.
There. Well, Derek's here right now. I don't know if we can... With our agenda, who do we have coming up here?
We don't have... We don't have a real... Until 10:45.
Yeah, 10:45, Highway Department. Derek's here. You want to go ahead with him, Alexis?
Please.
Yeah, Derek.
Hi. Hey, guys.
Hi.
Pretty much what I gotta discuss today is probably, uh, executive. Um, I got a contract that we need to discuss, $100,000, and an employee...
Employee issue?
Yeah, not real to issue.
Oh, just employee matter. Uh, did you hear Derek wants to go into executive session because of employee matter and contract?
I think it might be proper to separate them, so let's do the contracts first. How much time do you think you would need?
Not very long. Five, uh, five, seven minutes max.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion just to discuss the contract for the EMS medical consultant.
An open session.
Well, it wouldn't be open session if we're going to talk and determine a number. It would be, um... Oh, Mr. Lowman, if you would look at the list there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
About negotiating, um...
Yeah, well, to just... To discuss personnel matters with non-elected personnel?
No, that will be the second issue that you wanted to talk about within the department. I'm talking about just the contract.
Oh, okay, uh... Discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporation partnerships, trusts, and... No?
Is that number three?
I don't have my list in.
Yeah, I know, and I don't... I'm not... I need to... I don't have a law license here to figure all that out.
I think you did employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representative or representatives of the public body or agency before.
That sounds correct. I would entertain a motion to go in under that justification.
Okay, uh... And justification pursuant to that KSA 754319B, and that would be number, uh...
Three.
Four?
Three.
Three. Okay, and to reconvene right in the courthouse, except you're not here, but you're really reconvening in the courthouse in the commissioner's room. I'll second that.
Did you have a motion?
Uh, did you make a motion, Alexis? Yeah, Alexis.
I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing the medical consultant contract with our EMS department pursuant to KSA 754319-2B, number three, to reconvene in the commission room with the commission, the clerk, and the department head, Mr. Walter.
No, I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, I would say even beyond that, I think, you know, you need to shop around just to see what is...
What are you talking about? Yeah, but do we need a motion on this, or just instruct?
No, no, we're just instructing him.
Yeah, yeah.
He brought us... He brought us a potential contract.
Find the best one you want.
Call me. Call me when I get back down.
I will, too. Thank you. I appreciate it a million.
He needs something new, anyway.
Okay.
Works.
Okay.
Okay, hey, that's all I need, folks.
Well, we got the other issue. You got another issue.
Yeah.
You guys can come in and we're doing...
Yeah, this is with respect to merit increases. Shiloh's due for a merit increase. She's one that was in there.
Well, that's executive session stuff, isn't it? Talking about her.
Well, if we're gonna talk about... I mean, we can talk about money in open session, but if we're going to talk about anything that's related to evaluations and how that reflects on any particular employee, then we do need a separate executive session.
Well, Derek's talking about an employee...
Yeah, it kinda does.
A specific employee down there.
Let's add that on for...
And so then I believe we need to have a motion put on the table for a first executive session.
I'll move to go into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing, uh, merit increases for a non-elected employee. And justification is pursuant to KSA 754319-2B, number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. To be, uh, for five minutes, to be... To reconvene in a court commissioner's room in the courthouse when finished.
With the commission?
Sorry.
Oh, with... With the commission and the, uh, director of EMS and the county clerk.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded to enter into a five-minute executive session for merit discussion.
I'm gonna get you some exercise, Doctor.
Is there... Are there any questions? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Um, could you tell me what the reason was again because somebody was talking about it?
It's, uh, to discuss personnel of the EMS or of merit increase of a person... Non-elected personnel, individual in the person. And I don't know if that should be executive session or not.
It is. It is if we're talking about job performance or anything like that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and if it was just talking about the numbers, changing numbers, then that would not be. But as far as talking about anything that's reflecting on the evaluation, that would be executive session.
All right, well, we're in one now.
Okay, so I've got time until you set it.
Time is, uh...
Did you guys...
Five minutes.
Or did you vote?
No, we gotta vote on it.
We did. Motion carries.
Moving it, coming in here at, uh, 10:45.
We knew we'd be done.
Is there...
We got the minutes. Yeah, we should... We review the minutes. I guess we could approve them, huh?
One, I'm gonna... I vote that we accept the minutes for the 15th of July as written.
You mean the 18th?
No, 15th.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
You got four sets, yeah.
Oh, three sets?
Two, 15 and 18 you got.
I got 25 and... Oh, that's all proof.
You're sitting down with the boss.
No, I got the 15th. You're right. I'm sorry, Jim.
Okay.
My eyes, I need my glasses on here.
Mike, I've been known to make errors, but not quite that much.
Sorry, Ron, Don. Okay, now I'll second it. Uh, Alexis, Jim made a motion to approve the minutes. July 15th.
Okay, those in favor vote aye.
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 And I'll make a...
Motion carries.
On the 18th, I have a change.
Yeah, okay, Jim's got a change.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the 18th with a change. Uh, we went to the Highway Department and convened a meeting over there, and the purpose was to direct Ms. Lee that she assume temporary management of the Highway Department itself since time as Mike gets back, O'Hare. And I think that probably ought to be reflected in the minutes that he is... She is a temporary leader over there.
Sherry is by their job descriptions and their current hierarchy, but if you want to...
Well, if that's already covered, then we're all right. I just want to make sure that she had a valid reason for being in charge.
Well, I think it says right there, "To meet with Sherry Lee regarding managing the Highway Department in the absence of the Director of Public Works." And I think that's what she meant in that sentence.
Okay. If that's good enough, I'm all right with it, and I approve them as written. I make a motion to approve them as written.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been motioned and seconded to approve the minutes from July 18th. Any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I have... Is the Highway Department there yet?
No.
Okay, I have one thing I wanted to bring up. Don, did you receive the email about the breakdown of the other counties and their health insurance plans?
Uh, potentially...
Okay, I'm looking for mine right now.
What, did it come from another clerk, or...
Yes, another clerk sent me a copy of it, and it must have gone out... I think it's called the Health Insurance Survey.
There was a survey that was going around, but...
The 19...
You have to realize that when 105 counties reply to an email, sometimes I don't look at all 105 responses.
No, I understand. I don't know who sent it to her.
Um, well, there was a county that was compiling them, and I think I saved that email, but I haven't looked at it.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is go ahead and forward it to you, and you can send it to the other commissioners.
Okay.
Because basically, I just wanted you, Mr. Lowman and Mr. Abelman, to see the breakdown as we discuss these employee management benefit companies because it kinda gives you an idea of where some of these other counties are.
Okay.
On what they're charging their employees.
Yes, it's... Yes, it's the cost-bearing breakdown and what their plans cost. And it's very good information. There's a lot there to look at, but I think as we discuss PIC, which is the company that you guys motioned for last meeting, Don, did you happen to send her an email with our question?
I did, and she called this morning and said she'd have a response late this aft, or late this morning, but I haven't seen it before I come down.
Okay.
So you're gonna email us information Alexis about, to all this stuff, uh, so that we can review it?
Yeah, I'll just, on the spreadsheet, I'm just gonna go across, it has the county, the employee plan, the employee spouse.
Okay.
Goes into the employee cost, which would be their portion of the total square amount, and I'm just gonna pull off the top. Allen County, for a single employee, their plan is a hundred and fifty dollars, and their employee pays fifty dollars of it. But then when you jump over to their, the spouse plan, they only pay, it looks like the county only pays a small, small portion of that, so they're responsible for the majority of their other plans. So anyway, it just gives that spread across the whole, um, cell report so that you can see what's offered and how much they pay, and it goes by county, so there are some missing counties, but it just gives you a lot of the information to look at.
All right, sounds good. And one issue, I know we kind of, I guess we approved PIC last Thursday, but I, I think they'd be fine, except we had a lot more information with the hub guy, and, uh, and I know we gave them more of our data so they could give us, you know, uh, example quotes. One thing with PIC, she didn't hardly have any cost information directly to us on what it's gonna cost us and stuff, and that's, I didn't like that, but I, but I think they're probably okay. It's just whatever, she comes in with ten percent higher on everything, on premiums, and I would, you know, not that she will, I'm just concerned about that.
Do you remember any of the com, the counties that she had? I would, I would be interested to look at this spreadsheet here quickly and just see.
Well, she has a, yeah, on the back of this handout, she has, I think, lists of the counties and the businesses that she's...
Could you read off a couple?
Well, let me see if I can find it here. It's got all this paper.
It's in the back of this one, I think. She has Sherman Edwards for two, for sure.
Okay, I don't have any Edwards information. I'm gonna look at Sherman.
Uh, Sherman is Larry Enfield.
Yeah, that Enfield, who is, we dealt with on the Wilson Lake stuff.
Okay, I have their information here.
Uh, Sherman County is Micah Schnevelen, S-C-H-N-O-E-B-E-L-E-N. And her phone number, six-two-zero-nine-two-three-five-one-zero-three. That's Edwards County.
Well, it seems like Sherman County's numbers are very low as far as the portion, they're only paying six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars for a family plan. Are they, were they the self, I wonder if they were the self-insured?
Yeah, I don't know, and that's just it. You don't know if it's self or full, full insured or partial or what.
And that one says they pay a hundred percent of all the costs for all tiers.
It does say that because it says the employee cost is zero, the dental's included, and the family plan is only six-hundred-and-thirty-nine, and the individual plan's only two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars.
I would almost say they're per, at least partially self-funded.
Partially. Okay, hey, we have the highway department guys out here. Do we wanna go to them now?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll instruct them to come in. Yeah, we can discuss this healthcare.
Yeah, and you'll see the spreadsheet. Dawn's gonna forward it to you, and I just sent it to her, and it, it just shows you a breakdown, so that'll be helpful when we have this next conversation about it.
Okay, Alexis, thanks for sending that.
Yep.
We'll have the, some of the highway department people come in. Come on in. Hi.
Hello. I can hear.
Yeah, we can turn the AC on, but then I can't hear.
Sure.
At least for now.
Do you have the fan on in the windows?
No, I'll turn it on. We need you here to run this, bro. All right, we have, uh, Alexis is on the phone here, you guys, and we have Liz, then we also have Tanner's here, you guys, Emmett, and I'm not sure I know your name.
Greg Knight.
Greg Knight, and then we have Colton Panzer from the highway department, and, uh, do, uh, one of you, one of you guys be a spokesman here, Liz, or whatever, what's going on?
Yeah, um, yes.
Okay.
They, uh, Emmett has something, see, we kinda like to stay on behalf of the highway department.
Okay, all right.
They, they've, uh, elected me to be their speaker.
Okay.
Uh, we just wanted to talk to you guys about several issues. First one is the ten-hour days, okay? We're talking about, you know, we wanna keep them for several reasons. One of them is it takes almost an hour to get to our farthest reaches for the blade men to get there, and then you can get a lot more done in eight hours than you can in six, okay? And then with our Fridays open, we can get appointments, since we don't have actual sick leave. And it also allows for a second job for most employees because of the wages. Uh, saves gas for the, for, uh, employees coming in for the driving distances that they've got. Also, I think I've discussed this with you, Randy, it's a perk of our job because our wages are below state average on county employees. I know one of the things was the, one of the concerns was the phone calls coming to the courthouse. You know, those can, those could be forwarded to a cellphone, or they could, or we could get an answering machine, you know? With the rain days on the ten-hour days, they can be utilized for maintaining the equipment, and this year's been a, an exception for rainfall. We all know that. You know, it happens every, what, every ten years? So, that's my, that's our concerns on the ten-hour days.
Well, I don't think we plan on changing them right now. It's just that we, a couple months ago, when it rained, it seemed like it rained Monday two, or Tuesday, then you guys couldn't blade, or haul rock or whatever, and then about Friday, Saturday, it's beautiful weather, and you guys are off, so we're, and that's where we're going, gee, man, we have all this work to do because of all this bad weather, and at the time we need you guys, you're off, and then when you're working, of course, I know you can't, it ain't your fault the weather's that way it is.
Yeah.
And that's why we only had a concern with that, and I'm not against ten-hour days, especially now since you've agreed to do some overtime.
Yeah.
If you can, on Friday, Saturday, if we need to.
Yeah.
So, I'm not against that, really. I mean, I talked about it because, because of that issue, I just pointed out, because
Yeah.
it seemed like when you guys were gone off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and we had beautiful weather, and nobody's out there. And also on the, on the Friday, and I don't know, maybe for Liz or for management, we would almost wanna, not, not you regular workers, but for management or like you, we would also want somebody there on Friday because people are calling, the county, the public's calling, and nobody there to answer because you're all off.
Although I, I, I'm gonna, I'll address that. I had specifically asked, and Dawn and I had had a visit, um, one day, revisit about that.
Yeah.
And I, I asked her, I said, "Has that been happening as of recent?" I think it happened at some other times, but because anything, if she had been getting a call or whatever, not one person has ever called back on a Monday to say that they had called on a Friday, not one.
Okay, well...
And I mean, I'm just, I'm just stating that, you know, we've not had anybody call back.
And I'm not...
And I think they're used to the hours, but when he's done, I, I wanna go back and address that because I, I've kinda been kneeling something over in my mind, and I don't know if it'll work, but which would be kinda neat in a way, but we'll go back to that.
What about that? Talking about...
About just, uh, about the Fridays or what have you.
Well, I, I could see, say, a manager, we, supervisor could still be coming in on a Friday, because a lot of times Michael was complaining he didn't have enough time to do paperwork and stuff because but, oh, so if he's there on a Friday, and the rest of you are off, then he could catch up on that paperwork because you guys aren't running it out in the field anyway. So that's why we, we just wanted, because...
Well, I have a, then, I, I have a question, this is Alexis. Um, there was a list of things rambled off about the benefit to the employees to not have to work Friday, and, um, aside from the motor graders being warmed up and then driven to their location or other equipment, um, if you're an actual operator, equipment operator, like a blade, like a blade man, aside from that issue and gaining a little bit of time in the day, what is the benefit to the county or to the taxpayers to have a four-day work week?
The benefit is, uh, the fact that we are not wasting that extra hour in the mornings or whatever it takes to get, uh, our stuff warmed up. You know, that's one less day that we have to waste an extra hour. That's two extra hours that we're losing during the week.
But you're a blade operator, correct?
Yes, I am.
So that would be ten employees are blade operators. Um, there are about twenty-five or twenty-seven employees total, so that would be the ten blades, I understand, and I qualified that. I said, aside from the blade operators, what is the benefit to shutting down the shop and the office? What is the benefit to the county for doing that and only having four-day work weeks?
You mean shutting down all the equipment operators or the mechanics in the office?
Well, aside from the blades, the actual motor graders who do
Yeah.
times travel a long distance to start their route, you know, aside from that, which means with the exception of those, what is the benefit to the county or to the budget or to the taxpayers of having a four-day work week?
Okay, well, in that aspect, if you're having the blades work that, you know, work four-tens, and, you know, we're saving that, we still need rock hauled to us, we still need a loader man out there, we still need our bridge crew out there working because the truck drivers haul it in, too. And you need the mechanics in case of breakdowns.
So you're advocating that it's, that it's okay to have five-day work weeks unless it's the blades?
No, no, I'm not.
No, he's saying that he thinks they should have, those, those people need to be out there, too, because as the grader guy's working on four days, they need the rest of the support around them.
Well, I thought this was...
We need a full crew to be able to do something. That's why when you were talking to flex work weeks, those aren't gonna work because we don't have enough employees to run that, because you're only gonna have a full crew for three days.
Yeah, but what you're saying is you need them out there when you're out there, but if you're out there a longer day, I thought the first hour and the last hour were just getting to and from the job, so if they were available for the eight hours in between your warm-up and your shut-down, then how are you missing anyone during the day?
They still have to warm up their trucks, they still have to get to the gravel pit, they have to warm up the loader. That's still part of that warm-up and shut-down part. You know, there's still travel time for them, too.
Can I object on that?
Go ahead.
I work on the bridge crew, and our work is kinda intertwined. Yeah, he might be on a blade, there might be a truck driver hauling gravel, I might be in a backhoe, but if we have to take a truck driver away from hauling gravel to run a lowboy to haul the backhoe all the way to the end of the county, then you're losing productivity as far as being able to haul gravel where it's needed on the road. But if we leave him hauling gravel and we have to drive a backhoe to the end of the county, figure twenty-two to twenty-four mile an hour is top speed for a backhoe. You do the math of how long it's gonna take to ride that thirty miles to the end of the county. So you're still losing time traveling back and forth every day. So in an eight-hour workday, if you're spending an hour driving there and an hour driving back, you lost two hours every day. You take that times five days a week, you just lost ten hours of productivity just driving a piece of equipment. That's why we're able to get more done in a ten-hour day than we are in an eight-hour day.
So should we keep that open twenty, uh, twelve months out of the year, or, right now, we're only doing this in the summer, right?
Correct.
Would it benefit us to do it the year-round? But, but in the winter, of course, it's darker earlier.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the issue, you know, in the summertime, it gets lighter later, it gets dark later, you know, we got more work time.
Right.
And I understand in the wintertime going to eight hours, because, like you said, it's darker.
Because, because the light's gonna shut down.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. But, no, you think it's worthwhile in the summer to keep it where it is, ten hours?
Well, maybe I should point out that we are so far behind, it would actually be better to give everyone the overtime of two hours a day, and everyone can get two hours overtime. You know, our budget, we haven't spent the money we were gonna spend on motor graders, so I think we're so far behind. If you guys are saying you can get more done in a ten-hour day, maybe we should have five tens and let everybody catch up. I mean, the rain has destroyed roads and culverts, and we're so far behind, I'd be willing to pay out the overtime, and the employees, if they wanna get caught up, they should be willing to come five tens.
Well, not everybody has that availability. Some of us have families that we'd like to see. Some of us, like me, I work days and my wife works nights because we make so little wage-wise, we can't afford to stay, or we can't afford to pay for daycare for our four kids. So she works nights, I work days, so that someone's always home with the kids because we can't afford the extra expense, so...
Right, so overtime pays time and a half, and I'm talking about having ten hours of overtime every week until we get caught up, so that's a lot of money.
Right.
So are you against working overtime because, because of your situation?
I'm not against it, but it has to work for my schedule because I can't just, I can't just work overtime and my wife not work because that's not costing me.
Well, maybe you wouldn't have to work overtime, but maybe some of the other employees could, or would, or would.
Well, then you have to look at some of the other employees. They have second jobs. Some of these, some of these employees are farmers. When are they supposed to get their stuff done?
I guess I'm just gonna say, as, as the employer, this is your primary job, and if you can't be committed to it, regardless of what the schedule works out to be that's best for the county, then maybe the secondary job is what takes precedence in your personal life. We can't determine that as the employer. So we're not gonna make decisions, our budget and our schedule, based on someone else's second job.
Right, because we may...
But what we need to do is figure out how to get caught up, and what I'm hearing is that we're very far behind, but everybody likes the four-day work week. So it sounds to me like what we need to do is offer the overtime and go to five days and get some things done, because you guys are saying you do the best when you have eight hours straight, an hour of warm-up in the morning for vehicles and travel and whatnot, and an hour to get home and get clocked out on time. So maybe we need to look at doing ten-hour days until we get caught up, because the summertime's the perfect time to do that. Like you said, it's light out.
Okay.
I mean, it is, and I think, I think there are, you know, some of the guys that are doing the overtime, like, if they're out already, they are staying out. But, and, and, uh, some of them have been working a little bit on a Friday or Saturday, I believe, I, because I know, I know Emmett for one has been doing that.
Yeah, well, we gave...
And it also depends on the area of, like, the FEMA damage as well.
Sure.
You know, some of it didn't, some places didn't have as much.
Right, depends on the issue. Some people are working on something they need overtime. Some other people maybe don't have to do overtime.
Right.
Right, and I told, I told Michael that when he asked for permission to do overtime a month or so ago, he said, yeah, just, but only the people that need to be out there.
Yeah.
The key employees that you need at the time.
Yeah.
Not everybody maybe has to do fifty hours a week. I mean, some maybe can if there need to be, but not everybody needs to, you know?
Now...
Well, maybe it doesn't need to be, just leave this discussion. Let's leave this discussion at, let's, someone needs to talk to the employees who want more hours, who want to help the jobs get caught up, and then we have a scheduling issue because it comes down to where they can work and how they can coordinate with not everyone there. Because what I'm hearing is an eight-hour stretch in a ten-hour day is more work than a six-hour stretch in an eight-hour day. So we need to identify who needs an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, because that's not everyone. Certainly, it doesn't take an hour to turn on the lights in the shop and get your machines ready to work.
No, but it takes a while to get out to the pits and to get the loader warmed up that's sitting out at the pit. They can't load until the, till the loader's ready. And you don't wanna just take that cold because you're gonna ruin something, and then there's a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment down the drain.
Well, your four-ten-hour days still give forty hours.
Yes.
You still have five, eight hours, forty hours, so you get all the work done in four days. I don't have any problem with that. It's saying to me that the manager out there can see who wants to work that extra day overtime and schedule them, let them work. Not everybody will, not everybody can.
Yeah, that's, I think, too.
That's her job.
Make that overtime, I think we should make the overtime flexible, uh, and let, but if we do have people that you need, you should say, hey, we really need you to come in overtime. Now, you may have your situation where he says, I can't, I gotta be home. Well, maybe we, you know, make a deal. We could, in other words, we should be flexible with each individual employee, if we can, but we also want to work then, like you just said, we're behind, like Alexis said, so we appreciate if you guys, I know, maybe, maybe do a little more because we are behind, okay?
But, you know, you can schedule that. He didn't have to work ten hours on Friday. He could work six or whatever works, or he would do...
Right, I'm not saying I can't or I can't. I'm just saying that it needs to be an option, not a mandate.
Well, I know, yeah, I think we should be flexible.
And I think, you know, for the most part, I, to be quite honest, I don't think, I probably couldn't name me one guy that would say, I'm just not gonna flat do it, because I, you know...
Well, I can understand if you've got families.
Just a good group of guys, and they're gonna, and I think everybody is trying to reach the same goal of getting things good for the county.
Right, and that's good, that's what we want, and we can also, I think, be flexible with you guys, too. I think, we wanna keep... I think, we want to keep our good employees, we don't want to run them off. So I think if we can give you guys some flexibility too, that's, that'd be a perk a little bit for you too. But we do need a lot of work done. Well, you just said how behind we are.
Yeah.
And that, and that's all we're saying.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Based on our discussion here, I think, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the manager of the highway department to schedule that fifth day of 10 hours or whatever portion she needs and can find, uh, schedule work and pay the overtime for that. And that'll bring us up to date until such time as we go back to winter hours.
Do you work Saturdays too?
Me?
No, I mean to
As a rule, um, I know Emmett has, I know that Colton was with, when
Excuse me?
Yeah, that's
We have a motion on the table, so we need to either second that or let it die.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion has been seconded to allow scheduling on the Fridays for overtime. Now, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I was, to answer the question about some of the guys, I know that Colton was also working the extra day on Friday or Saturday, whatever, when we were doing the spray. And I know that he is not doing the spray anymore. I think that's gone all to Dan. And, but I know that Lance had come in and done a couple services. I mean, there've been things that kind of been done that they might not have been able to. We've had a lot of things come up, breakdowns and all kinds of different things, you know.
That hectic year with this weather.
Yeah, yeah, and so it's, I mean, it's kind of starting to work out, everything, but, and I want one last comment on that, 10-hour day.
Yeah.
If I can, I don't know if Emmett had a dam, I don't remember, but when, I am almost positive when every single person was hired to the county highway department, that was one selling point for everyone is that we had Fridays off. And that's, I'm just going to say that. And that was for me, that was a huge steal for me.
But that's just in the
Correct.
That's just in the summer, right?
In the summer, in the summer only, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Alexis, I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure that was only in recent years because they've gone, Dawn would have to verify this because she's been there much longer than I, but it was my understanding in previous conversations that we had gone back to a four-hour day from a five-hour day, excuse me, a four-day work week from a five-day work week, which was previously, I think it had gone back and forth a couple times. So I'm not, I'm not sure that that applies to all employees, but I understand what you're saying. Some of them who have been hired on recently understood that, oh, the highway department has four-day work weeks. But what everyone needs to understand is that the commission needs to do what's best for the budget and what's best for the county. And we're very far behind and that's for a mixture of reasons. So I believe the motion is to allow overtime on Fridays, keeping the 10-hour days Monday through Thursday. And I will call for a vote now. So those in favor, vote aye. Aye?
Alexis, Alexis, we still have an input from, from Liv, go ahead.
She was saying, okay, Alexis, you were only saying through the overtime on a Friday.
Excuse me, I, go ahead.
If it, would it be, I mean, is it not going to be better for the motion, I don't know how you want to do it, not on just a Friday, but say if a Friday didn't work for one, but his Saturday worked, or is that okay as well?
Yeah.
Dawn, would you please read the motion as was stated by the maker?
Um, I can't because he mumbled so much that I'm going to have to watch the video to see.
I believe the motion was for Fridays, so would you, would the commission
I don't think that it was. I think it was just overtime with no specific date listed. I, if you guys are going to make very long motions, I think from now on you need to start writing them out because with me sitting in the back of the room and people talking in my ear, I can't always hear. And people talking around me, I can't always hear the motions. And I shouldn't have to listen to the motions 20 times off of the video.
I'm going to suggest that the commission vote down the motion and remake the motion. So I'm going to call for a vote for what's on the floor. Those in favor, vote aye. Those in opposed, vote nay.
Nay.
Nay, motion defeated. Now, if the motion would like to be replaced, please do so.
I move. And we continue the four 10-hour work week, Monday through Thursday for the highway department. And to bring the county up to standards, we allow the director of the highway department to schedule overtime on other days of the week as the director sees fit and can find employees to work.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion at this point? I guess I would just still like an explanation as to how it benefits the county for all employees to be on a
I believe I already stated that.
Um, you gave me the benefit, you listed the benefits for the individual employees. I wanted the benefit for the county and the budget.
The benefit for the county and the budget is you don't have that extra day of start-up and shutdown time. That's two hours wasted there. That's county money that's going down the drain.
But yet we're going to schedule overtime at leisure to catch up on projects that do need to be worked on continuously.
Yeah.
So we're paying out at a rate at one and a half times for those additional days.
The county still gets their 40-hour work week on Monday through Thursday.
And if we did, and if we just did eight hour, five days a week, eight hours, we'd still probably need overtime because we're behind anyway, so I don't see any difference.
Well, because we haven't discussed a rotating schedule where some people work Monday through Thursday, other people work Tuesday through Friday.
Well, that won't work.
Well, they explained that because we don't have enough personnel to, say on a Monday, say you have one, one group working Monday to Friday, and you have one group working Tuesday to Thursday. You may not have enough personnel that could work Monday and have, for Monday and a Friday to be, say, a truck driver or a dozer operator. There maybe aren't enough people to cover two shifts. That's what I think the issue is, Alexis.
Well, I do, I have spoken with other counties who do that rotation and it seems to work for them. So that must be a logistics issue within our own office, but I will leave it there, call for the vote. Those in favor, vote aye.
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 Motion carries.
Did you vote aye?
Yep.
Do you have other, any other issues?
Yes, they were concerned about insurance, you know, everybody's talking about changing the insurance. And if you, if you change insurance companies and you don't like what you get, you know, and we go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, our premiums are going to skyrocket because we were grandfathered in on this, I believe.
Where are you getting that information, I may ask?
I've, I've heard several people
Me too as well, like I, I specifically said that, like, there've been, um, I wish I could give you an example. And I, and I've not as late, as of late talked about any of the insurance. But I know that in passing, that people that I've talked to, good lord, it could have been a year ago, I don't remember. But anyway, said that once you do go off that Blue Cross and if you would go back, you, usually the premium goes because I think the county's been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for quite a while. And I remember when Deborah was doing the insurance, she even specifically said it to me that with our insurance rates as they are, if it, if we ever quit, it was probably going to be a major increase if we went back.
Okay, I'm going to stop this conversation.
But I don't know that to all be true, you know.
Yes, I'm going to stop you there and say this is all misinformation. And this is a decision for the commission and department heads. And as much as we want input, we're in the middle of collecting information and everything that you just said is not true.
Well, that's good to know.
Well, let me kind of summarize where we're at. We're looking, we've been having state insurance through the state plan or benefits through them. They've gotten more expensive and we're looking at brokerage-type insurance play outfits. And we've interviewed five or six. We're down to one or two, actually one now. And we've checked and actually our rates should probably get cheaper for you too. Depends on how we set it up for the employee. We haven't determined that yet. But, but the way it is now, you would still have Blue Cross, it would probably be, or you have them options. We haven't determined that for sure, but I'm pretty sure we will because they're the biggest carrier in the state and a huge nationally. But there's, and then also United Health, those three, and you may have options on those. But about everybody we've interviewed would have that. And actually, we're looking, where we could save the county money on premiums because we may partially self-insure or self-insure where we would handle it. We're not sure about that for sure yet either, but, but the thing is, it would save the county money, but you guys, I think, still have just as good benefits as have we checked. We don't see, now, we may, in some cases, depends on, right now, we pay 90 and 10, 90% and 10% for the employee. That may change a little, I don't know. Like especially if you're, for the individual, maybe not, but if you would go to a husband or a family, you may have to pay a little more for that.
Mr. Lowman?
Yeah?
What needs to be said is that employee utilization of the health insurance is what drives our cost. It's like having car insurance. Every time you have a wreck, it may up your insurance. Now, I'm not asking people not to get sick, but what I'm saying is going to the doctor versus going to the emergency room, if it's not an actual emergency, ends up saving us money because our claims history is what drives our premiums. So that's what the employees need to be discussing, not how we shop around for a plan, but how we can lower our claims because the lower our claims are, the, the more affordable our premium is and the less everybody will pay out of their paycheck.
Yeah, that's, I think, yeah, employees, hopefully kind of, yeah, not to abuse your insurance. In other words, try to, and I don't know if we have that problem, do we?
I'm not just talking, I'm not talking about abusing it, I'm talking about if they're worried about how much health insurance costs, they need to learn that how, how health insurance works. And so going for your well visits and catching things early and things like that is what the company is going to push as far as increasing your knowledge on how to work your plan. And there are some plans that have wellness programs and there are some that do not, and we don't have that in place yet. We did have it in place because it was offered through the state program. And so Liv, by you saying that we were on Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's not true. We were on the state plan and we were locked into it for three years. So we are now looking to leave the state plan.
The state offered Blue Cross to us.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, we have Blue Cross.
And anybody we get new is going to have Blue Cross too. So you won't be, you won't be changing hardly anything. Probably transfer right over, only just be
Potentially, potentially. They're going to be bidding different companies.
Right, we're bidding
Until you see the premium, you don't know what company you're going to go with. And I think what they're trying to say is they like the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan.
Right, I know that.
So, one other thing on that, if you guys, if we change insurance, you know, what about this point system we're going with to save the $480 for the people that are, that are doing it and they have their points for this year to, to save next year? And you change insurances, that goes out the window and they did that all for nothing.
Well, hopefully they did it to stay healthy.
Well, yeah, that's true, but it's also to save $480, so, you know.
You mean as part of the
Health quest. Health quest.
Yeah, health quest.
I'll, I'll explain it this way. The state makes you sign on for three years. Now, we could have withdrawn and paid a penalty. But for us to sign on this year for another three years would not be beneficial for anyone because all we've seen are yearly and semi-annual increases. In fact, this year, all of the employees were supposed to receive an increase in July, but the county budgeted last year to keep your payments the same throughout the year so that you didn't see the increase, but we had already paid into the budget to cover the increase.
And we appreciate that.
So there's no benefit, except I understand what you're saying, the people who were planning on staying on the state plan were doing their program. That would be a loss unfortunately, but overall, that's not worth a three-year commitment of steady increases that we cannot control.
And hopefully, and hopefully it will be cheaper for the county premiums that county pays and hopefully still give you about the same benefits, at least that's what we're hoping.
That sounds good.
About the same benefits you have now. And that, you know, it's like over a million a semi-year county pays for a premium, that's a lot of money on a seven or eight million dollar budget. If we can make that 800,000, stay at 200 grand, possibly we can, we don't know yet, but we're looking into that, okay? It's trying to save the county money and the taxpayers' money, but still give, take care of you guys too. We want to take care of our employees.
I understand that.
We, we thankful for you employees and respect you. Sometimes it may, you may not see, I think we do, but we do. Yeah, Steve?
Yeah, that thing on Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the bank, when I was in the bank, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield lady said, if you go off of us, you can't come back on with us for
Okay, I'm going to explain this again. We are not on Blue Cross and Blue Shield anything. We are on the state plan. When you're offered the state, you have the choice of using Blue Cross and Blue Shield as the provider for the coverage. We are not contracted to Blue Cross and Blue Shield as a county employer.
Yes, at the bank, we were on the Kansas Bankers Association plan, which was Blue Cross and Blue Shield. But if we went to another one, you couldn't get back on there.
And what I'm telling you is we are not on a plan with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We are on the state plan, which offers Aetna and Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
No, but Steve, we looked in, with these brokerages, we looked in, they've already come up with numbers to us that we're going to have Blue Cross as an option and it'll probably be just as cheap now, benefits or payment, premiums that you guys have paid. Then, and even maybe even cheaper. So we, they've already given
That's staying on Blue Cross, yes.
Well, we are going to stay on it. We'll have the option to, hopefully.
Even if they didn't want to use a brokerage company and go someplace else, we could, we could contract directly with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We may have to pay a really high premium, but we can still get on Blue Cross Blue Shield. The only way Blue Cross Blue Shield wouldn't ever take us back is if we were an uninsurable group where we had massive catastrophe claims to where we ended up being a higher risk than what we were paying in premium. That would be the only way. And right now, we have a healthy group, so now's the time to look at bids. I know you may not feel healthy, but I don't feel healthy half the time either. But right now, we have a healthy group, we have a mix of ages that maybe we can actually save some money and maybe we can save money in our own pockets.
No, we, yeah, we know we, you guys have concerns. We're not going to throw you off a cliff here and say we're not going to give you benefits. We, we just want to save the county money, that's the intention here.
Okay.
I think we're, we've reviewed five or six different outfits and had them come here several times and give us their pitch to us. So we're not, you know, we're trying to take, do a good job here of reviewing this stuff.
Yeah, but nobody's questioning that, I mean, nobody's questioning that.
I think a lot of these questions are, are coming up because of not having had hired an HR person yet. And Dawn's, Dawn's doing the best she can with trying to ask a lot of questions or answer a lot of questions. I mean, no, I'm not talking today, I'm talking in general, just trying to fill some shoes. That's just where all this came about, was, you know, it's not saying you're asking
rather than everybody rumor-milling and spreading gossip that isn't true, yeah.
One of the benefits of the, one of these, we talked to these brokerage firms, a lot of them are very good at, they're going to talk to you guys, employees, each one of you and say, what do you want? Hopefully, that's what we'll get with this. And they can coordinate and help Dawn out so she doesn't have to do all this coordination. Right, as, as a benefits coordination, they'll do it, okay?
The only thing I forgot to ask the company that you guys have preliminary picks is whether or not they could have an HSA plan. Whether there's a combination. I know the hub group, they could build a combination similar to what we have for the state where you have some choices. So that's something I need to ask that pick lady, but I'm sure that we can. Where if you were just with, a very long time ago, when we were just with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you had just one option. This is the plan, you either picked or you choose and you picked which tier it was. So we'll see if there's options.
Yeah, and hopefully it will because I, I can tell you, there are several families who faithfully use that. One of our guys has to have medication like every month for all thonuses and everything. I mean, it's, you know, it, they use that health savings plan. So hopefully that will be an option.
Well, we'll make sure we ask about that. And we haven't decided, we preliminary picked one group, but we haven't for sure. We can, we haven't signed anything yet, so, okay. So we're, we're going to try to give you the best benefits we can here. Anything else, Evan?
We've got a couple more here and hopefully it'll be quick. Everybody's wanting to know why we're splitting hairs on 25 cent rates. You know, why, why we're having problems with that.
With what? I didn't hear that.
Why we're splitting hairs on a 25 cent raise.
Why, why we're splitting hairs on a 25 Why we're splitting hairs on a 25 cent raise, Alexis?
Why that's such a problem, I mean.
Well, we came up with these evaluations, this is what started it, which was trying to get management to talk to you guys, employees, and to determine your performance.
Okay.
And we had a rating system and, you know, based on that, we're giving merit raises or not, based on the performance. And we had a certain amount of money there in a pool to hand out, and that's where we came up with. So to say, that's where we got a ranking system on, based on performance.
Okay.
And that's how they determined that. Now, this is the first time, I think, we're doing this, right Alexis? First time you've ever done this? So we maybe need to modify in the future or tweak this or something, I'm not saying that.
Lincoln County has not been doing employee evaluations, and so attached to the employee evaluation is the merit raise. And this year, the county was generous enough to give everyone 25 cents across the board. So the mid-year, we decided the additional 25 cents was available to be determined by the evaluation. So all the department heads were instructed to do evaluations on the employees and the commission did evaluations on the department heads.
Okay.
At this time, we have delayed our decision on the structure of how we're going to break down the scores because, as you know, when you answer questions and you get some higher or lower, they're going to be subject to a certain number, whatever that percentage is. So we preliminarily determined that that percentage was going to equal a cent amount. And what we're finding is there is a pretty big disparity between departments, so we're in the middle of discussing how to close that gap, whether we use a curb system or whether we just individually assign by department, something like that. So that has yet to be determined. We're going to be doing that by the next pay period, so everyone will see the raise that is reflective of their employee evaluation in the next following paycheck, not the one that's going to be distributed at the end of this week.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I had on that one.
Now, what about for people for like their annual? Because like for me, when I applied and got hired on, I don't remember if it's, if it's in the handbook or if it was advertised, but it talks about you get a raise of six months and another one at a year. Well, my six months came around and I had to wait two and a half months before I ever got my six-month raise. Well, my year...
That was reflective of whether or not your department head requested it from the commission.
Okay. Well, my one year was in June, June 4th to be exact. I had that evaluation and once again, here it is about a month and a half later and I still yet to see the fruit of that labor. Colton, I think, went almost five months before he had finally received his.
That would not be, that would not have anything to do with the generation of your paycheck. The commission approves wages and the clerk generates your paycheck. If you had not received your raise on time, and it does specifically say there's a six month and a 12-month raise, if you did not receive those on time, I would be asking your supervisor why. It has nothing to do with the commission.
Well, do you know anything about that?
Okay. Okay. I think as far as Colton's, if I think back, because there were several at that time, and I'm thinking that with Colton's, the deal was, I believe that Bob might have been kind of sick during that part, and I think Colton had done his part of it and it waited until Bob got back, I believe. Because Bob had done some, I mean, there was, there was something to that.
I know.
But then, I know, I know Colton's was made up retroactively, like it went back and he picked up that time. And I think on, I'm not for sure as far as on Greg, and that could just be oversight. Dawn and I, I think, good God, I don't know how many months ago, talked about maybe trying to figure out a way to slip it on the calendar, and I even think that was even kind of talked about even probably when DeeDee was here, to somehow figure out a better way so we can remember, so like say myself could even help to remind Michael or, you know, the, or Bob as it was at that time. But trying to figure out a better system for us to all know when that is supposed to be...
When everybody's anniversary day is.
Exactly.
I think the other thing is too, is a lot of blame gets put on my office and on this board when it's actually the supervisors. It's their responsibility, and I'm sorry, endless times, even when Deborah was there, she would call down every month and say so-and-so, so-and-so, so-and-so. She would give them the slip of paper and they still wouldn't do it. Now they're tying the raises to the evaluation, so if the evaluation isn't received, then they're not asking until they get the evaluation done. But somewhere along the line, your department head needs to take responsibility for some of those actions.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think so too, and I think we kind of talked about somehow like between, uh, maybe it was DeeDee, I don't know, but I thought you and I talked also about trying to devise something on Outlook, even on Outlook that will pop up on, on the new payroll.
That is the responsibility of each department because however the department head wants to keep track of his or her own employees, that's on them as far as keeping track.
On the new time clock system, we did add anniversaries, so you can see anniversaries. It's not gonna help you with the one year, but you'll see where employees are at. And the reason why I liked that and I made sure that we added it to the departments and got it up and working so that you can see it when you go under the dashboard, is because if, really technically, how the merit-based raises should be to make it a little bit easier for the departments is on the month that the employee is, is completing their anniversary. So then that way, it would tell them, for example, if they have six employees that are entering their anniversary during the month of July, it has them listed right there. So somebody has a clue that they are done, so then they could actually do the, the evaluation, come in and ask you guys for the raise and be done with it rather than you guys assigning it on a yearly basis to everybody, if that makes sense.
One last thing and let's go on. If I was short of my money, I wouldn't be waiting four or five months. A little bit reflects on you guys by not going in there and saying, hey boss, what the hell's going on?
And I think they, I think they have...
You really have, but that's, you gotta stay after that.
Well, and I think with Greg, I think his just got dropped and I'm not, I, because I am pretty sure, I passed that on because he brought it up to me several times and I made sure that it was to be mentioned. Now, whether or not his eval came over on that, I have no idea, because that...
Is not tied to the six month and the one year. So again, Liz, I know you're asking the director of the department right now, but this falls on the director, who is not here.
Exactly.
And that needs to be discussed or fixed.
Alexis, you guys were making them do the evaluations before you would approve the raise since like December or maybe November even. So, so they had to present it to you because they've been presenting the evaluation since last fall. But I could go get Greg's evaluation that he did and you guys could do that and we could get June taken care of because his evaluation could count for both and if there's anybody else. I think it's just Greg.
We could do that. Do you want to do that now or?
Well, I, I couldn't do that after you guys get done.
Dawn, all I was saying is that the evaluation for the merit raise, yes, it can be used to validate the six month or one year, but that was really always done on recommendation of the department head.
Right. But you guys, in late fall, they came in and asked for a raise and you guys said, the board at that time said, where's their evaluation? We want to see their evaluation. And they had to do their, can you turn it over?
Yes.
They had to do their evaluation before you guys would grant the raise.
Yes, and I think we do need to establish that as a board, as you said, to use the anniversary date for the year 2019 in order to continue with the raises. And that way, like you said, the department head will know it's X, Y, and Z employees' annual review and that's how they do it and they can get their raise at that time. So if you wouldn't mind, yes, let's take care of whoever needs to get their retroactive pay.
Okay.
I got one more thing and then it's a few points here. I want to talk about Jesse and Michael and the job they were doing, you know.
This cannot be discussed in open session, so if, if you have something that you would like to say in general as far as the projects that you're working on or what project is next or what project has been completed, please feel free to continue.
But she's saying if it gets real...
No, I'm saying if you're going to mention an employee's name and what they have or have not done, or what you think of them, or anything about their job performance, that may not be said in open session, so I'm just gonna stop it now. If you want to talk about the projects such as Jesse started the bridge on Milo and it is not finished yet, then we can talk about that.
Okay, I'd like an executive session to talk about it sometime.
Okay, we could do that now, I suppose.
He's a blade operator?
Yes, ma'am. You have a problem with that?
No, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
He's not an executive.
Okay, so who's asking for the executive session? I apologize.
Emmett Haug, who's a...
Okay, so Emmett Haug is asking for an executive session. I moved to read this into executive session for 10 minutes for, for the purpose of discussing the highway department restructure and management pursuant to KSA 754319 to be number one personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the basement commission room with the commission and Mr. Haug.
Who do we want to talk to? Just Mr. Haug or you guys, anybody else besides you?
I'd have Liz and what's his name.
And Liz.
I feel that if you're going to be talking to one employee about the supervision, then you don't need to include other employees. That's why my motion is as stated for the commission and Mr. Haug.
Well, you need to, your department head.
Liz is your department head.
And it was done, they, they talked about it as a group and I think Emmett just added some things of his own as well. I mean, he showed it to me to read, but it was talked about as a group.
But as the county commission, we are bound...
Sure.
...by law here on what we can do and what we can't do.
Sure, I just wanted to let you know that, this is, yeah.
So we just make a tweet about them, yes?
That's my motion.
Were county clerks involved too?
No.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded for the executive session and I will say, under the discussion, my purpose is that we obviously have a shift in management happening and the commission has already spoken one-on-one with the current acting director, so I believe if there are issues that need to be discussed about people who are not present, then we can talk about that. And actually, I'm going to correct myself right now and say that since Jesse Zacco is no longer employed with us, he will have to be omitted from this executive session discussion. We can talk about the current employees and then if something wants, if something needs to be said about Mr. Zacco, then it will have to be said out in the open session. Is everyone clear on that?
How long was the executive session?
10 minutes, right Alexis?
Moved for 10 minutes. Mm-hmm. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And I need a five-minute break here, Alexis.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll be in the bathroom now.
Yeah, I need to go too.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see, yes. I'm, I am handing them, like, the project sheet that I showed you the other day or, well, that was laying on the table that you saw the other day, and, and it just says...
Is this the one that Mr. Zacco provided to us?
The what?
Is this the one that Mr. Zacco created?
Is this the handwritten one that Mr. Zacco did before?
No.
No, this is a different one you did, right?
Uh, yes.
This is the one...
No, yes, it's not the one on the coal burns or any of that. This is, this is that thing, that daily thing that you fall in on the table when you come over.
Schedule, the schedule.
Yeah, basically the schedule.
Scheduled things for different people here. Do you have one for Alexis?
I do.
Here, I'll just lay, Alexis, I'll lay it on your pile of paper over here, okay?
We'll just lay it on the phone, she can read it too.
Yeah, I could, I could take a picture and text it. No, I can't, it's on my phone. But what, what we did this morning is we just kind of went over everything. I wanted you to kind of know what they were doing, and basically, this is probably about gonna go throughout the week, but, you know, the lad pit needs to be cleaned out and so they're gonna use that gravel and it's gonna go up into the Sylvan territory. And, let's see, some of the guys are reclaiming gravel. Then we just have our guys who are mowing and blading and I think today they were gonna try to do mostly dirt since it's a little bit drier for the gravel roads. And then, let's see, I'm seeing if there's anything different. We've got a couple of mowers that have kind of been down, so I know that that's what the shop guys are working on, plus they're still, Foley Cat is, will be coming in to do some services on the equipment. And again, I, I kind of wanted to make, make that clear that Cat or Foley, they end up doing just specific services. And so the ones that are coming due, I think there might have been one that might have been a little over in his hours, but that is Foley equipment, they are monitoring that. It's all done through computer. And so the guy was here last week and did a couple of services and then he had to pull the big filters and take them back due to the process of that service. So I just wanted you to know that, I know that someone has said it was, he was over in hours because he had said that to myself, but I made it very clear that it's actually Foley Cat that monitors those first services. And then they're, they're doing some, like up with, in Bobby and Dave's area, they're, they're gonna be laying some gravel and stuff because I think there's a little bit of a FEMA project up there and something having to do with the tube, and I don't even know if I'm in the right area of that, but somewhere around a schoolhouse or something where there was a washout. And I know they were talking today to Steven and, you know, I think gonna kind of work on that and get it, it done as well. And then, that was kind of for the week. I mean, they'll be hauling, and I think they'll start hauling chip rock also and putting it on that Ringler property that they got ready last week. And then, well, I did, I did talk to Dawn about a time clock thing already, we just kind of did that off the scope of the thing. And I think that from talking with the guys this morning, I'm gonna have to call APAC and Haze for the pre-mix that'll be done for chip seal, that they will stockpile to do the pre-patching. And...
Let's see, like Tim Line's not on here, what's he doing?
Oh, did I miss Tim?
Blading problem.
He is.
Yeah, I know he's a blader.
He is.
That's what they...
Oh, doggone it. Ooh. We're having computer problems today. We're, we have no internet.
No big deal, I know he's a blader.
Yeah, and I, so I, therefore, I can't even connect to the copier.
That's fine, no, no problem.
That's why I had to handwrite it, but anyway, and so moving on kind of from what the guys are doing, we're, as I said, we're kind of having some problems.
Liz, could you, could you state, what is the time clock issue?
Oh, I just asked Dawn about the lunch thing and her email. I, we were just trying to figure out on our guys who are out in the field as far as they don't have the ability to clock out. So one of the guys in here had, actually had a question for her also, he, one of the bridge guys, and so I just thought I would ask her point-blank on that, see if she, for what she wanted us to do. And she told us...
And while she is the point person on the time clock, I just want the commission to be kept abreast of that because it's all new and we mandated it, so I just want to know what the issues are.
Okay. Well, and I think, I think a lot of it with us is that anytime, because of that not being an automatic dismissal at lunchtime, like the time clock is not automatically checking it out, those guys are either gonna have to come back into the office every day to clock out, which I don't believe that will happen, but I'm just gonna have to manually clock them out, a 30-minute lunch, or we're just gonna automatically know if they had a 30-minute lunch or, I mean, whatever the case may be. If they're on a project, sometimes they will just kind of eat their sandwiches or driving in their truck. I mean, and right now with hauling chip rock and stuff, I mean, I don't know how they'll do that when they're out in the field for sure, until they actually do it. But that's all it was, was a 30-minute lunch, clocking in and clocking out, if it was going If it was going to be done automatically already on the time clock without them having to do it, or if we still need to make provisions to punch them out.
So some of them are, are automatically, the ones that are out are automatically coming off at thirty minutes. So basically what it does is it makes it look like they leave a half an hour early on the time, when the time clock system, it has their punch in and their punch out. But when it comes in, it doesn't have an in-between punch, so then it reduces the hours. The others of them, we had it as a break. Um, we had it as a break and it wasn't rounding. So like, for example, Hannah had sixteen minutes of extra time because she got to, to, back from lunch sixteen minutes early throughout the last three weeks. Um, and not sixteen minutes in one day. That's a minute here and a minute there. And so in order for it to round correctly, we had to take the break off and have where they actually put clock out. So like if they clock in, it will round it to the nearest fifteen minutes. So if she clocked back in, say for example, at, at twelve twenty-nine, it's gonna round it to twelve thirty. And that will take care of that sixteen minutes of overtime that is saying that we owe her just because she happened to clock in and walk in, you know, exactly a minute ahead of, of her clock out time for thirty minutes later. So that's the only change that occurred.
Yeah, she's, Dawn's keeping us in line.
We, we have to make it work, 'cause if you're gonna sit there and tell me that I can't pay them for their minutes, that it needs to round to the nearest fifteen minutes and we have to get the time clock to work so that we're not paying them for their minutes.
I agree with that.
Okay. Um, let me see, I'm just flipping. It was a little chaotic. Oh, I think too, as you, when you, when you guys were over there, I mean, you saw kinda where we were. Everybody was going to be as far as the chip seal process. And then I told you about the... Oh, and, um, another thing is the, um, computer system. And I think someone else in a different department had mentioned that Windows is upgrading. So we will have three obsolete computers over there in the office. The one that got put in Bob's old office is current and it's ready to roll. But it will be, um, Michael's office, my desk, and then the computer out in the shop that the guys work on will all have to be into the upgrade. And actually the.
What do you mean?
You're breaking up again.
You're breaking up, Alexis.
She said, "Why did you say obsolete?"
Well, you can upgrade software, right? Just an upgrade.
They are not going, they will have, from, from my understanding, they have to upgrade, like the hard drives will be off because it's going to Windows ten. And we have, I think, Windows seven. And from my, my understanding, when the guy even called from Nex Tech and he said, "I'm just giving a reminder again that if you guys have equipment that falls under that seven, they only have a window of so long that they can keep being tech for that." Um.
Well, can we upgrade?
If Windows, if Windows does not extend their contract and their upkeep, probably county-wide, anything that has a Windows seven will have to be replaced, was my understanding.
Well, Windows seven is worldwide.
No, but it's just an older version of an operating system. Well, they could upgrade from a seven to a ten, can't they?
They, no, he said, "We've not seen anything come down the pike yet that says they are gonna upgrade the seven to a ten." It'll be entirely new, like they will not.
So it'll be like you need new computers or new software, whole operating system installed or something, right?
Yeah.
It's them, it's worldwide.
It is, it is, and, and it's just.
So you're telling me all these computers have Windows seven worldwide, can't upgrade to Windows ten?
That's exactly what they're saying.
I don't believe that.
You don't actually have to upgrade, ever.
They just will never support.
The thing is, a seven is stable.
I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Can you answer that? I mean, if I talk, no, I mean, I'm staying from the gallery.
You, you don't.
I'm just asking.
You don't have to upgrade.
But their tech support may not support them if they don't.
How often do you?
Okay.
Right?
Ken, I'm gonna interrupt for just a second. This gal whom I've never met. And I mean, I guess it's our time to talk. I'm relaying that information. And so, I don't know who she is. I've never met her. And, I mean, I'm only relaying the information. So I'm not, I don't have the answers. And I don't feel that you should answer that question.
I wasn't answering that, I was making.
But are you supposed to being in the gallery? That's all I'm asking.
It, it works.
Well, let, let's get back to the issue.
Yeah.
So you're, in other words, we may have an issue with the operating systems.
Possibly. And I don't know, I'm only bringing it forth to you guys because that might be something that might have to be looked at at some point. I don't know. I'm not a computer expert. I'm only saying what the guy told me.
Well, I could, uh, help you on that.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm just bringing it up to you.
Can you call, you got their phone numbers and stuff? So we can contact them. I don't need them right now. Maybe I'll come down at your office, huh? And we'll call them, we'll call them.
And I think they told every county department about, 'cause I know I understand.
I was going to interrupt and say, I believe the treasurer came to us with the same concern and decided that it was a sales gimmick.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. This is coming straight from Nex Tech themselves. I mean, and I don't.
What did they offer for you to do?
It's a security issue is what it is.
Is this a mere fact that you don't know makes you a primary target? So that is why I believe Randy should help. He has a computer background, so that's.
Well, and I can help. But the thing is, is, uh, does it affect the treasury department up here? Dawn, it affects our county treasurer, you said?
There's quite a few computers in the courthouse. It doesn't affect ours because we just got new computers.
We have Nex Tech doing all of our services.
But from what I understand from the, the people that the, the tech is talking to them about is that it affects the security of the system. And that we won't be secure and our information can be easily. Yes, because they're not going to be updating it. But I will, I could email them and ask them to give us.
Well, I'll help you. I know this technical stuff. But the thing is, is we've upgraded and I've had, we've had computers for thirty years. And you always get upgrades to all this stuff. You go from Windows ninety-five to ninety-eight to blah, 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 blah. You know that. So there's gotta be an answer here to upgrade this. They just ain't gonna leave a million computers out. We'll be able to go to seven to ten. So there's a way to fix this, I'm sure.
They haven't offered anything yet. That's, that's what I'm saying. And yes, being a prime target, absolutely. But on the same turn, I'm only reporting it. I'm not the one that makes that call.
We know, we appreciate you reporting it.
Yes.
No, and I'll check in.
You guys taking the hit, my lady.
No, I just, I just, and I, I can help you. I can even come down there or even the whole county, I can. And so could Mona, known as a software person. But I was too, I've been twenty years in this stuff.
Yeah.
But I can figure that or help with it.
It says, "Once Windows seven ends, the, the support will end. Your PC will become more vulnerable to security risks. Windows will operate, but you will stop receiving security and feature updates."
That's just, they're not, they're gonna quit updating seven because it's old.
And then you can order an, um, an off-the-shelf one.
He hasn't seen anything come through is what he was saying.
Why can't we upgrade to ten from seven?
I don't know, that's for the computer people.
Well, I'll talk to them. Let me talk, let me talk to these Nex Tech idiots.
I think the other part of it is, is all these computers are aging. So if you're gonna upgrade, you might as well.
Well, they are all, hardware's getting older, software's getting older. Yeah, we should probably maybe get newer computers and new software eventually. Or at least one at, once in a while here, obviously.
And, and I was only reporting it as something that was brought to the department. That's far past me. That's it.
But I, well, no, thank you for doing that. We're not, we're not cussing at you here.
No, no, I know. No, I'm just saying, that's it.
There should be, there should be, they, they may be trying to scare us too, saying, "You ain't gonna upgrade there for your vulnerability." I don't know if they're vulnerable.
I just kinda felt that somebody better know that. Somebody better know that.
Well, we'll check in on it. I'll help you, okay? And I'll help the whole county with all our computers do this.
Okay.
And I'll talk to the Nex Tech people.
Okay.
Okay, see if they can be up there.
Now, I also today received a resignation. And I know, I don't know if I can say who it is or what have you, but I made copies and the original for Alexis and I don't know how you guys properly handle that.
You can give them here, sheets of gauze sheets.
Okay.
Uh, we, we can't, Alexis, we probably better not talk about that here right now, actually, or something.
They can. If they have resigned, are they already gone? Have they left for the day?
Yes, he's done.
Okay, they're no longer employees. Open session material.
You might not wanna read that open session.
No, please do. You've already introduced it. It's public information now.
Okay. Okay, okay. Well, I guess you guys.
I can't read who that is.
Oh, I'm, can I say who it is then?
Right here.
Yeah, it is Trent Hall.
Trent Hall?
On your sheet, up there.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I guess it did put it on there.
Didn't he just hire him?
He did.
He did?
Yeah.
And not only a month or so ago?
Yeah. He actually took another job.
And I'll give the original to Alexis. Alexis, I'll lay the original. It's a handwritten note on your pile and I, there's a copy of it also here.
Okay.
That would be all I have.
Okay.
I think that's probably enough.
Anything else Alexis for, uh, Liz?
I want to know where we are on the project for Bison Drive because we had a request and we had approved over, I would say, six weeks ago to start work there for the drive, uh, well, there, there's a house being put in. And it was an extension of a gravel road for an additional, I would say, half mile, three-quarters of a mile. And I had requested two blade operators to be on the agenda a few weeks ago so we could discuss this project. And they did not come in. Um, now I understand you have multiple employees there today. And I know that this wasn't your project, Liz, but maybe you could u- update us on this project.
Okay. Yeah, I believe when you, when you guys came in and visited, um, with me on Thursday, we talked about that. And.
No, it wasn't on your schedule, remember? 'Cause I had asked what they, what those guys were doing and that, that wasn't on their schedule. So the house is set to be completed and a move-in date of August thirty-first.
Okay.
No, July, July thirty-first, I'm sorry, July thirty, August thirty.
Oh, okay. Well, when you got, when you came in Thursday, last Thursday, we talked about that, about that job.
They wanna reiterate what was said.
Pardon me?
I don't remember talking about that other than I asked about it and you said that we weren't working on it currently.
No, 'cause I think I, I think I brought it up. I think I brought it up and I probably wasn't very nice about it when I did. But I think what ended up being is then we kind of talked about the FEMA as well and that there were some things that were needing done. And so today, what they're doing is they, they had something that up in there, the two guys you were talking about, as far as, um, that needed to be done. Because I think they're the ones that are kinda working on, maybe not specifically them where that tube is by the school, but, um, they had some part of a road up there. And I, and Bobby and Dave both were working on it. And the guys, because of the pit that they're cleaning out, I guess, they're, you know, they're, we're trying to eliminate that gravel because obviously that pit's gonna be up for reclamation. But I believe anyway it is. And, um, anyway, so while the guys were up in that area hauling rock for spot graveling, they were gonna try to take, and they're gonna do Bobby and, um, Dave Winkler to, today. Uh, they should be doing that this morning as a matter of fact, getting them done. So then they should be able to hopefully sometime this week start going up to that road. But.
Okay, but my question is, what is the plan? Because it's my understanding that we need at least two culverts replaced on that road while it's being dug up. We need the ditches pulled and the shoulders reshaped before we lay material. So is there a, I, I know this isn't your project that you didn't start, but is there a plan? And this is the exact reason why I wanted to talk to the people who were gonna be doing the work.
I believe that is the plan. And Stephen, they were going up, um, as far as with the culverts, and they were going to, to, unless he did it on Friday, I'm not for sure, they were going to check some things out. And so, I don't know, Tanner, with Tanner being here today, I do not even know where this place is. And I thought if time allowed him, that maybe we could just run up there real quick sometime today and jot it down. And then that way, that was the plan for me to bring back to you.
This is just an ordinary road. This isn't something that requires an engineer. This isn't an actual project that needs reorganized as far as knowing any kind of specific dimensions. This is just a road that already exists that needs two culverts dug up and replaced with new ones. So you'd need someone to measure the culvert, know what needs to go in there. Do we have them? When they can get there? The logistics of all of that. That's not necessarily an engineering project.
I just wanted to be showed where the place is, so I can see it for myself.
I'm paying Tanner to be there to be an engineer, not to be a chauffeur.
So what, you said it's on Bison Drive? And then what's the side road, the other road, or what intersection is it close to? I've never heard about this project, so.
It's not a project. That's what I'm trying to say. It's not for you, Tanner. You're, you're hired as an engineer. This is just a road project that I wanted to speak to the blade operators about because they were working on it. We're just extending gravel on an already existing road that needs a little bit of shape up because it was dirt.
We, and we talked about that today. I just need to be, I would like to see it for myself, honestly.
Sure, if you hook into your mobile three-one-one program, you just type up the area. They should already have something in there about it. In fact, I had asked, there are some of those operators that are using mobile three-one-one pretty regularly. So if you would just connect to that, boom, it's on the map and you can take a county vehicle there and look at it.
That is fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with doing that. But I will tell you, we talked about it last Thursday. And from what I was gathering from our little meeting there in the office was that we were going to finish FEMA because obviously that's a lot of money coming into the county. And so in order to do that.
We have finding some help. We asked David Doe to help you get the paperwork done and to start working on mobile three-one-one, which is all interconnected here. So that's perfect. I mean, it's a perfect combination. Have you been able to get with David for some help yet? Or talk to him about it?
No, I haven't because I told you last Thursday that I wouldn't be available on Friday because of my mother-in-law's surgery. And I haven't had a chance to call him yet this morning because the office has been pretty chaotic. And so I'm, I.
There's, there's your help. So it's already set up for you.
I plan on doing that. I plan on doing that. And I'm gonna visit with him on my walk out of here. But what we discussed last week specifically is that those guys know that they're gonna be doing that and it's probably going to start this week. That's what I'm saying. The guys were up there hauling rock. And, and David and Bobby both have some places of spot work while the equipment was up there, while the guys are hauling up there, they are doing three different spots today to get three done in one day. And they know that they're going to be starting this project this week. And so as far as the measuring and stuff, that's gonna be on Stephen to go up. And that's what I said, I'm not for sure if he ended up going up there on Thursday or if that was part of it today. Because he talked, they've talked, everybody has talked about it that's involved.
Well, I just think you should, yeah, well, then I'm gonna try to.
Yeah, I mean, and then that's.
Try to get her going today this week.
That, that is in the works.
Honey, you know for sure we need two new culverts in those places, Alexis.
Well, that was the exact reason I wanted the blade operators to come in. That was them suggesting, I had the office and asked to speak to whoever was on that route. And I believe it was Bobby Zacco and he said that he knows and coordinated anything for material at that point. But he said he believed that the two culverts needed replaced before they did that. So that was exactly why I was asking what is, because that would be, the first step would be while you're digging up, fix it before you lay anything on top of it.
And, and that is the plan. It's just that, today, because due to that circumstance of all the gravel, that's, that's why they're getting that out of the way first. And we had already talked about the other part and those guys getting on that road.
Well, it sounds like they got a plan in order here, Alexis, to do this.
I just don't have it on paper because it hasn't begun at this, at today. And who knows, if they get their spot graveling done, they might be able to start doing that part today. We did just get the dang one call back in and that just came in. I printed off the ticket today.
Awesome.
Yeah, so see, that all had to be done first.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
That's it.
You got anything else?
No, I think that's it. It's probably enough, isn't it?
And thank you for, thank you for, Liz, for stepping up and helping.
You're welcome.
Helping us do all this in any other current situation.
So you know on record, you know, I'm probably a complete idiot doing this. But we're doing it all together, so it's working.
No, you're doing a very good job because you gave us a lot of information.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
And Tanner's here, uh, we, ready for him, Alexis?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, I got a number of things here I've been kinda working on. Um, the first of which is, uh, you guys asked for me to develop kind of a structure replacement tool, um, like a spreadsheet showing, uh, different structure types that, you know, Lincoln County and some other counties have done. Uh, put together some just general costs for each of them. Um, and identify some parameters for each of those on when, um, you could replace a structure with this type. Um, so I have the spreadsheet on a flash drive. Um, I guess I can leave it with Dawn when I leave. I went ahead and also printed off, um, so the spreadsheet has four tabs. Um, and each of these is a tab. So I thought I'd just print it off and give you guys each of. So I thought I'd just print it off and give you guys each a copy.
Sure.
Um, so you can kind of see what we did here.
You got one for Alexis.
Yeah, I got one for her.
We can put it on your pile Alexis.
Yeah. Um, so do you guys want me, I guess I can run through it.
Yeah, summarize it.
Okay, yeah. So the first tab, um, it's actually the first two pages. Um, I think there's 10 different, um, structure types they could replace a structure with. Um, the first one is a low water crossing. Um, then we get into our simple spans with our steel beam and our precast concrete beam. Um, and the fourth one there is a concrete box, a precast concrete box. Um, and then, uh, your CMPs or your corrugated metal pipes. And then, uh, I know we replaced a couple of structures with those half-round railroad tankers from the railroad yard down in Oklahoma. Um, and then the next one, um, I know you had asked me to add flat cars, so I-
Well, I'll check into it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I reached out to them.
If it's feasible, why not?
Yeah, so I reached out to, uh, a supplier for these railroad tankers. Um, and they run about 22,500 apiece. Um, they're only like nine to 10 foot wide. So you're gonna have to put a couple of them beside each other.
I'm gonna put two together.
Yeah, and then another one, another one of our concern was the load rating. So we actually found one that another county did. Um, and as part of the, the state's doing the statewide load rating where they're going out and load ratings, um, all the bridges over 10 years. We actually found one and it was posted at 10 tons. So we feel, and I haven't, I didn't ask for measurements to actually do a load rating for one, but this is based off of one that we found.
And that's not very much, so.
Yes.
So it's probably not very feasible to use these, right?
Typically, when you put a new structure in, you get it for above legal, so you don't have to pressure it.
I just want you checked and you did.
Yeah.
Looks like they may, they may not be very good.
Yeah.
I just had other counties telling me they're doing it, that's all.
Yeah, we, the counties we work with, they haven't really pursued these quite a bit because of the load ratings.
Okay. Well, yeah, we don't want to-
But it, it's an option, you know, if you guys could get one for cheap or something and we have a, you know, a, a road that's not really used a lot.
Well, the only reason one commissioner told me that, he was working with, from Boyd up here, Mitchell County, working with Jewel County and they were gonna do a hundred thousand dollar bridge. And Jewel says, hey, why don't we just do this, uh, these, these bridge things, we did for 20,000 or, or 40, with two of them, and you know, save 60 grand. And that's what I was told, so. But maybe it's not a feasible way to go, I don't know.
Yeah, and they're, they're 89 foot long, so they're pretty long. You'd probably have to build a, or you will have to build kind of a abutment. Probably drives some-
Well, they're only good up to 10 tons. I heard they were like an inch and a half thick steel almost.
Not a lot of farm machinery you'd get across. Right, right. So they're gonna have to restrict it more.
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's true.
And I, and, and that was based off the other engineers' load rating, um, Kirk Michael Liam had actually got all the dimensions and load rated one.
Sure.
If we wanna go into that, I can-
Well, if you don't, if you don't think they're feasible, no use going there.
Okay. So then the other three structures are kind of your bigger span structures, uh, your concrete haunch slab. Um, that's the structure replaced out at Off System 87, uh, north and west of town here. Um, and then your bigger steel beam spans and then your precast concrete beam spans. Um, so those are the 10 structures that we've seen counties replace, you know, uh-
How do you determine, like I said, the bottom three, the reinforced concrete, steel beams, precast, based on the situation and the amount of traffic and how long, then you determine which is best?
Yeah, yeah. So that's what, and you know, every site, that is one thing about this. This is guidance. Every site's different. Um, so, yeah, so I'll just, I'll just keep going here. So then the third page will be the second tab. Um, a lot of counties like to identify what design storm, um, is acceptable for the county. Um, so like a major collector, obviously you want the structure to be able to handle a larger design storm because you have more trucks and vehicles running across it. Um, I made this tab and I, I put some design storms for major collectors, minor collectors, and then your local roads. Um, so major collectors, I put a 10-year design storm. Um, that's usually typically what we recommend on a, you know, a heavy, uh, traveled route. And then your minor collectors, um, a five to 10-year storm possibly. And then your local road, um, being a five-year design storm or, um, if you want a low water crossing or something in, in there, that's a two-year design storm. Um, these are just chances that that storm will happen. Um, so we run hydraulics, um, and with hydraulics, we can determine what a 10-year, a five-year and a two-year storm is. Um, so then we just run the hydraulics, determine what those are, and then it would come up with a flow and then, um, size the structure accordingly. Um, so that's what that tab is. Um, and then your next page, so here, um, is your input for the spreadsheet. So, um, you put, pretty much put in, uh, your existing bridge name or your, if it's, uh, if it's an actual bridge size, it should have a state number. So you can, I think it's a 15-digit number. You can enter that, um, your bridge location, and then your drainage area. And the drainage area is determined from, I usually, I have a bunch of topo maps. So I can sit down and pretty much draw out, you can see where the water breaks or the high points. So you can kind of draw an area and then flood the area and determine your drainage area, whether it being one square mile, two square miles, um, anything like that. Um, and then it's got an existing bridge opening height, um, and an existing bridge length. So your drainage area is kind of important because DWR likes to see the structure the same or bigger. Um, so if you do a structure smaller, then we've gotta show some additional information to DWR. Um, and then we, I think we've gotta do some surveying at the back end by setting, by setting a benchmark or two. So here's some of the design parameters, uh, the design ADT. Uh, usually you can just look at the SNA and the bridge file and come up with that, whether it be 20, 30, 40, 50 or 100 vehicles. Um, overtopping issues, that's another thing we added. So, uh, I know what we're doing right now, we're, we're trying to find some local landowners that's kind of familiar with how things drain. Um, we call them and say, hey, are, have there been any overtopping areas? Right now the hydraulics show that it's a 50-year storm, but we need to put some in that big. Um, and if they come back and said, yeah, that thing gets overtopped pretty regularly, then we may keep the same size. So we added that, um, and then is the route, um, has high volumes of traffic or is the emergency route, um, a mail route, bus route, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So you can enter that information also. Um, so all the yellows are what you enter, um, and this is in draft form. Um, I, I've sent it to Michael and he was gonna look through it and review it and comment on it. Um, so that's that tab. And then the last page is the final tab. And so after you enter all of that, um, you can see that there's a box for each of the different 10 structure types. Um, and then beside it were the parameters that we identified to whether that structure could be a possible replacement option or not. Um, and I, I went ahead and wrote those notes out so you could kind of see, um, what we, what we did or what we initially kind of thought. Um, you know, if we wanna adjust one of those parameters and, um, so right now, Lincoln County has a lot of structures that are deep channels. Um, you know, 15 to 20 foot, with low water crossing, you gotta pull the roadway down, need more right of way. So it's kind of tough. So I think we set on that, um, if the opening height is less than 5.1 feet. So that'd be for a kind of a, not as, or a shallower channel, I guess, to be like a low water crossing. Um, and so then if, if it meets those parameters, then the X pops up on the left-hand side right beside it. Um, and then that could be a potential replacement option. Um, again, this is just guidance, uh, so it's, you know, every site's a little different, um, thing to deal with on each site. Um, so, so yeah. Um, and then the last one here are requirements. So this talks about permitting. Um, contact KDWPT, that's San Franis Division of Wildlife Parks and Tourism. Uh, we always reach out to them to see if there's any endangered species. To date, I haven't seen any endangered species where we need to do an action permit or anything in Lincoln County. Uh, contact COE, which is the Corps of Engineers. We always typically reach out to them, let them know about a project. They usually issue a nationwide permit. Um, it's pretty easy to get. Um, and then DWR is a big one. Um, so they've got some maps showing if the drainage area is two or greater in Lincoln County, you're supposed to get a permit with them. If it's less than, or one, if it's less than two square miles, then you don't need to give a permit.
Who's DWR?
Division of Water Resources. So they're based out of Manhattan. Um, and then-
So if you got a, uh, drainage, which is a bigger area than they have to sign up for?
Then two square miles, yeah. Then you gotta submit and get a, a permit.
Do they come out with inspectors then and look at it?
Um, typically no. Um, we haven't seen, usually the smaller county projects, we haven't seen them show up.
If it goes across county lines, DWR has to come out.
Okay.
Or at least they blessed it.
Uh, so that's that. I mentioned the survey and our benchmark. Uh, we've had to do that on a couple of our projects where we put a little smaller structure in. So DWR does ask for a, a benchmark. Uh, be put on a plan. So then, one of the days I'm down, I go set a bar and then shoot a shot. So they want the, you set that at 100 and then shoot, shoot the roadway surface and then give them elevation of the roadway and then also the channel. And then a bridge length structure, so you guys probably already know, uh, it's 20-foot or greater, it's a conservative bridge and they gotta do biannual, annual inspections on it. And then whether a load rating is required or not. So if it is a bridge, KOD requires that you do put a load rating and a set of plans into the bridge file when you do your inventory inspection. Um, yes, when you put a new structure in, so like 87, that's gonna get an inventory inspection on it. And then we gotta put a plans, a load rating, and then get on their web portal or online and fill out a bunch of information for the new structure. Um, so that's just some information that you guys can kind of see that we've gotta deal with.
Yeah, that's good. Good summary there of information.
Yeah, so if you guys could, uh, is it okay if I leave it with Don or do you want me to email it to you? We've got it on a spreadsheet or a flash drive.
I'd, I'd be good.
For that, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and if you guys look through it and comment like, hey Tanner, what if we change this a little bit? Just free field, email me or call me or anything and we can, um, yeah, get that adjusted to how, how you guys feel.
No, it's a good summary of all this stuff. It's just, I, I'm not sure you have, how you make decisions about what to do. I suppose you have to do an evaluation, then go from there, huh?
Yeah, usually, so Michael, I usually visit the site, um, and usually I think he's got an inventory of what he has on site.
Based on requirements for each-
Right.
Project, right?
Right, right. So usually we go and visit the site, I get some measurements, um, take a lot of pictures and then we usually go and run hydraulics around drainage area to figure out if it's sized properly, if it's not, and then-
You know, you know now maybe we do, do we have a priority list of, of like all of our bridges that need work done in the county or fixed? Do I say this is a critical number one, this is, number one, do we have a priority?
So I think Michael and I kind of developed that. I think that was a year or two ago when I first started this.
That's fine.
Um, I don't know if he's been updating it or-
Yeah.
Or what, um, but I know we kind of went through and developed-
And currently, what are we doing, like one or two a year of the bigger bridges?
Um, yeah. So last year, we had contractor do 87, um, north and west of town. And then, uh, Jesse and the Bridge Crew did 105 just west of town.
Right.
So I think they were only able to do one, the county forces.
And now county culverts is, but, but obviously that's easier and you don't have to get involved with that much, do you?
Yeah, so like culvert less than 20, we're not gonna need-
Engineering, you?
Yeah, pretty much. You can if you want, but we're not gonna need it for the bridge file, we'll give it to the state.
Yeah, okay.
So that's how you guys, I, I usually typically recommend still doing the permits for a culvert. And then as far as your placement structure, then it's kind of to you guys. Um, you know, if you've got some pipes, an inventory that you wanna use. I know, uh, the county's got a bunch of like nine-foot steel plates that you can build arches out of. So we've talked about maybe using that to build an arch. So, um, yeah, so it's kind of dependent on your guys' budget.
Now, some of these, Alexis brought this up before, we have some of these old bridges, these limestone ones, which are like, uh, historical. Do you get involved in that or with engineering with us on something like that? Would that be a specialized outfit or what?
So we can, um, if you wanna, um, not, I think that was my next item here, was a tuck point project. If you got, if you wanna go out and tuck point some projects, then, uh, we can help develop specs and that kind of stuff. Uh, we did one in Barton County where we helped, uh, develop like a spec for the tuck pointing. Um, yeah, so if you guys want, need help with that. Um, I actually, while we're talking about it, um, I kind of made a map showing, so, uh, um, we inspect the bridges every two years. Um, typically, um, if they're in pretty bad shape, then we gotta do it every year, require annual inspection. Um, so our inspector develops a maintenance list, so some items on what you can do to go and, um, you know, just regular maintenance on the structure. So, uh, this one right here, cleanout cell number two. So there's probably silt buildup in that cell. Um, so we developed this list. And so what I did is I looked for any place that we said, uh, tuck point and repair flow line stones. Um, so I went and highlighted each of those.
Okay.
And then I kind of made a map, um, showing where they're all at. Um, so I didn't know if-
Oh, good, yeah, man.
And, and some counties will, okay, we want to put a hundred thousand dollars to tuck point. Then we can kind of prioritize these and say, okay, let's try to do bridge one, two and three. If we get good prices, then we'll have alternate four and five. So something like that.
I know it's kind of out of your area probably, but do you know of, of grants that we could get? Like a historical money grant or anything like that to help with that stuff? And I know that's not really up the Euro ballpark here.
Alexis, I'm trying to think if we've done that on any other projects.
Alexis, Alexis, you probably know about that, right? Giving grants for this stuff. Are you there?
Yeah, some will be available, but remember the structure has to already be approved and registered on the registry for either the state or the national one. And I believe right now we don't have very many, so that would be part of the process. Um, for example, I do know that the double arch stone bridge north of Sylvan there on 181 is-
Is listed as a historical red, bridge, right?
Yeah, it's, it's registered.
Registered, right, yeah, that's a word.
I'd provide a little bit of-
Right, so in order to get any money, we would have to be registering them.
And then, too, then you gotta comply with-
Yes.
A special builders or special people who are experts at fixing that stuff, right? You just don't get a regular bridge crew people in there.
Yeah, so like if we put together a spec for a route, um, then they have to review it and approve it. Um, so that's a little bit of caution the counties have is when you do register them, then they do fall under their kind of jurisdiction.
Right.
So usually counties don't go out and register all their stone arch bridges, but, um-
It would be mainly specific ones that we knew qualified or needed minimal maintenance. But I have been asking for a list of all of them so that we can begin the bidding process on repairs.
Yeah, and I've got that right here of all the ones that our inspector found to have that needs to be tuck pointed. And I can leave that with you guys.
Yeah, uh, you only have one copy or?
So here's, yeah, so there's two maps and here's the list of the maintenance list with the ones highlighted.
We could just, uh, why don't you leave it with maybe with Don or, because we only have one copy here, uh, right? Well, we could leave it with Alexis.
And then I, and then some of the, so some of the things I saw, some of the structures that were needing some tuck pointing, uh, weren't stone arches. Um, so there really was, let's see, one, two, three of them were actually stone arches. Um, the rest, a couple of them were like steel beams. So they built their steel beams on top of a stone abutment. Um, so the engineer, whoever designed it, thought the stone abutment was in good enough shape that they could just put their beams on that. Um, so I, I tried to write out beside here kind of what, um, each structure is. So SB is steel beam, arch. Um, do you want me to maybe prioritize them? Um, or put together an end-up list like that or, um?
I don't know. Alexis, what do you think?
Well, that would definitely be helpful, especially while we're going through some changes right now. And I wanted to look at the budget and what we could do to begin that process here with the rest of the year. So yes, if, if you would do that as far as what you've been working on for us as a continuing project, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can do that. Go back and look at the condition re-torn and everything?
Yeah. Okay. And those copies, we could just-
Yeah, you can. I'll have these here.
I'll put them- I'll just leave these, Alexis, uh, he gave us the maps and some other information. There's only one copy, I'll just leave that on your pile. Then you can have that for reference, okay?
Thank you.
Anything else Tanner?
Yeah, I've got a lot.
Okay, well-
So we still have time, do we need to take a break or anything?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Got through that. Okay, got through the tool, tuck point projects. All right, the next thing I got here is the wind farm. So I, we finally got a response. We had, we had sent some emails back a couple of months ago trying to get some more information from the Anell because they're doing the repower on Smoky Hill 1 and 2.
Yeah.
Um, I finally got a response to some of the questions we had. Um, so right now tentatively schedules, they're planning, or tentatively scheduled, um, they're planning on working on the civil work. So civil work includes all the turning radiuses, any upgrades to the roads, what they need to do to bring the components in. Um, on Smoky Hills 2 in the fourth quarter of 2019. So this year, the fourth quarter. Um, for Smoky Hills 1, um, they're planning the civil work for the second quarter of 2020. So I assume they'll probably work on Smoky Hills 2 and then fall into-
And that's starting this fourth quarter of this year?
Yes.
Which is coming October, November, December, huh? Really, that's sort of, and what does that again, that civil work mean?
So it's, uh, so it's- So it's, uh, so civil work, the wind farms usually have like your electrical crew, your civil crew, um, your collection line crew. The civil work is all the dirt work, so, um, making turning radiuses for, um, you know, the big component trucks that require huge turning radius. Um, upgrading the road, so if they feel like the road's not gonna be able to handle the heavy loads, then they'll come and maybe add rock to it. Um, if they need a, you know, do anything to the structures, so maybe a structure that's posted, so they may have to crib it or anything like that, that's what they would do. So then Smokey Hill two, they would actually install the component, the new component pieces, um, in the second to third quarter of twenty twenty. So, um, and that was another question we had is what exactly do you mean by component pieces? So for the Smokey Hill two, they're gonna put in new drive trains and rotors and then new major components, gearboxes, generators, and so on.
Well, that's a lot.
Yeah, so I think they're gonna do a pretty good overhaul on these, and in Smokey Hills ones, they're gonna put in new nacelles, um, and rotors. And then gearboxes, generators, uh, and some other stuff, so they're gonna do a.
How many, do you know how many windmills there are for each, like, Smokey Hill one?
Yeah, so they actually gave me a map kinda showing. And I can forward you guys all this information too.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, so I'm, I'd have to sit down and count.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think there's quite a few.
You don't have to worry about that, I just had a few, you have approximately. Then we had the one issue was with, when they take about the old components, what they do with them, are we gonna, one time we heard they were gonna cut them up and haul them off. But then I've heard maybe they're not, and some people were concerned they're gonna dump them out, some guy's pasture up there, so do you have any idea what they're gonna do with that?
Um, and I, that could be a follow-up question I can ask, is what do you guys plan to do?
Well, because there's, and I, you know, and that is.
No, and that's a, that's a.
Somebody was wanting to get one of them blades and maybe bring it down here and put it in a park or something as a, kind of a, uh. Look, you know, like a, a tourist landmark thing that we're a, we're a windmill county community, and I don't know how feasible that would be to do that. Like, or if that's, you probably have to have a special trailer truck to haul that here.
Right, you'd take a pretty big rock.
And that's a different issue, that's something we don't need to know, but we do wanna, we are concerned, make sure what they're doing with the, uh, old components. And that they're don't, and I don't know if, I don't know, I'm just curious. I don't know, I don't know if it's right or wrong, somebody may want them, some farmer may want them out here.
Right, right.
But I don't know what to do with them, but.
So let me, I'll respond to that, um, and ask them that question, that's a good question. Component pieces.
Because they're gonna have a lot of extra parts when they take them all apart, right?
Right, and I think, I think they already know, reached out to Michael about taking them to the landfill.
This stuff doesn't degrade, so when you build it.
And that's a tremendous amount of stuff, too.
Right, it's three blades for each turbine, so there's a hundred turbines, that's three hundred, and they're a hundred fifty foot long, but like eight foot diameter.
Exactly, there's.
Pretty big.
That's why there's a big concern what they're gonna do with that stuff.
Right, right.
Now, I, you know, if somebody wanted one of them blades to put up somewhere as kinda like a Lincoln County landmark thing that we're a windmill county, maybe I don't know, against that.
I think if they look at that, they'll find out that those cannot be used where people could touch and beat on them, because they'll break and then you'll have cracks and chips and hazards.
You could have a liability issue, huh?
Serious.
Yeah, maybe better not do that.
A wood baffle with fiberglass outside of surface.
Is that what they are, fiberglass?
That's what I think they are.
And that, you know, chips and dings on that, everything, you know, you got, it's real hazardous.
Yeah, well, that may be true, I don't know, okay, but yeah, that's a question, what they're doing with the ones they're taking apart.
Okay, and so the reason I brought it up, um, we discussed a road maintenance use agreement, um, so now since we got some answers, I plan on kinda. Um, putting some language in that road maintenance use agreement, cause stuff that we've learned, I did a lot of wind farm work, um, looking at roadways before and after and looking at the structures. Um, so this agreement was back in two thousand seven, we've learned a lot on maybe how to protect and cover the county, like dust control and some things like that. So I'm planning on adding some of that language and then, uh, you know, next month I'll bring it to you guys. Um, and then if you guys wanna review it, um, easily ask for the county attorney to, I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer.
Yeah, we would, yeah, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, county attorney, make sure my language is okay, um, and so they're pretty much just told me to present to you guys and then once we feel good with the road maintenance, we'll give it to them. And I think they'll sit down and.
If they, they're gonna use the existing roads we have that they've, a lot of them they created the first time around, they're gonna basically use those again, but they may have to upgrade them somehow based on, they're not be. Uh, in condition they like, and so we give them, when we give a road maintenance agreement, we're giving them the authority to go ahead and do that?
Yes, yeah, so typically, um, I like to do a pre-inspection of the roads, so you go videotape them, uh, and also take photos. Measure roadway width, amount of gravel, look at all the pipes, um, and then do it again.
I have a question or a request?
Yes.
Is there a way that when you take those pictures, they can be saved so that we can upload them into our mobile three one one program?
So, uh, our pictures are all taken with the GPS camera, um, so I can give you a TMZ file of the photos and they're pretty much, in Google Earth, they're put right where they were taken. So I don't know if you could use that to put it into three one one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there may be a way.
You know, when they do this maintenance, say they have to fix the road, our county highway department does not get involved in that at all, let them, or do we coordinate and help them anyway?
Typically, um, typically the counties, now every county's a little bit different in how they wanna set up, typically they do all the improvements, um, and then usually the maintenance. Um, if the county wanted to do the maintenance and maybe enter into an agreement with them, so much per hour to hope of maintenance, um, we've had a couple counties do that. Um, but typically they install, we make them install the, cause we know the county's got other projects they're working on.
Other stuff to do, yeah.
Right, right.
And if they'll do that, and it's.
Yeah.
Fine, I say let them do it, I just didn't know if we had to kinda oversee it since it is our county.
And, you know, that's something else.
And if somebody drives up there and wrecks on one of the roads that they're, uh, working on, are we liable or are they liable?
That's a good question, so I think with the road maintenance agreement, that's why I think some of the counties have them install the improvements and assume the maintenance on them. And so then they're pretty much checking the roads out.
Wouldn't that be something that's addressed in the contract?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, make sure we have that in the contract to address that.
I would think that they carry pretty decent liability insurance.
Yeah, so I think typically counties usually ask for one or two million. Trying to think if your guys have had anything in here, yeah, so before you guys had a million for insurance.
Both parties would probably be listed in my assumption if something did happen.
Okay, right, yeah, and so, uh, so we've done a couple of these repowers, some of the counties, um, so our fees, we make it reimbursable by then. So then you guys, it's free.
Good.
Make them pay for it, um, some other counties have asked for like a part-time inspector, um, to go out, you know, once a month or something and just. Drive the roads and make sure they're in good enough shape, um, other counties feel the pre and the post are fine. I don't know if you guys had a preference on how, and, and I can write it in to provide a full-time guy and then let them come back and say, we don't want that or something. It's kinda whatever, whatever you guys kinda want.
Could we ask for a mid-project inspection, that way there's three posts and mid?
Yeah, you could do that, too, that's, cause usually, so this is a, a repower, um, a lot of the projects that are new. We do like to do a full-time inspection just cause they're so hectic for the counties and a lot of stuff going on. Since this is a repower, then yeah, I think maybe just a mid-inspection or a quarter inspection or something, that would probably be fine.
That's what I would suggest, but I'm open to anyone else's input.
Well, that sounds good to me, how about you Jim, you got any questions? Yeah, Jim's shaking his head yes, so, sounds good.
Okay, so I will, uh, add some language to that and then I'll send it to you guys and the attorney.
Yeah, we'll have to review it, we'll review it and then let the attorney review it, alright, sounds good.
Okay, next thing, I'll start from up here, wind farm repair. So bridges, so. So KDOT issued. Alexis, you remember last year there was an off-system bridge program, um, so KDOT issued an off-system bridge program for federal fiscal year twenty twenty. And what it includes is, uh, um, the county can apply into the program, it's gotta be an off-system bridge, so everything on, uh, minor collectors and local roads. Um, and they can get money to help replace the structure, so off-system eighty-seven was an off-system road, um, bridge. So it was an eighty-twenty split for the construction, and since reason KDOT money, the construction engineer, so having a inspector on site full-time. Um, the county's gotta come up with design, survey, geotech, and any land acquisition or getting right away or anything like that, they've gotta pay for that a hundred percent, so it's a.
Sorry, he said that, I didn't hear, is, is there a specific bridge you mentioned?
No, so that's where I'm getting to here, um, so we got a, we got that in the mail, we got a letter from the state saying, hey, we're calling for projects, I think it's due in a month. And so I went and looked at the one last year, so typically we got one the year before, we submitted last year, typically they don't give you one back-to-back. Um, so this year, it's been a year, so we have a good chance of getting one, I guess. Um, so I looked at the structure that we submitted last year, and it was off-system eighty, or off-system one oh seven. It was, it's kinda down. South and west, actually south of, uh, Corksite, um, so we were able to get letters of support from Corksite, I think it was on the route. And there are a couple farmers that live there close that we got, um, letters from, letters of support. So I reached out also to KDOT and said, hey, are, are any of the criterias changed as far as the selection? Typically, they put emphasis on the structure being fracture critical, so that's your steel trusses. So fracture critically, you got two members, if one breaks, the bridge is gonna fail, um, usually when we design a structure now, it's non-fracture critical, so it's got internal redundancy. So I, I reached out to KDOT and said, hey, is this one still a good candidate for that, and they said, um, well, this fracture critical has a low sufficiency rating. But this year, we're putting more emphasis on the condition ratings, so when our bridge inspector goes and inspects a bridge, he has kind of a book. With guidelines on how to rate the conditions of it, uh, so your good, condition rating is, how does your deck look, what's your rating for your deck? Uh, your superstructure, so that's your main, just below your deck, pretty much your support, um, your substructure, so that'd be, um, pretty much your, your piling and stuff that goes down into the earth. Um, and then the channel, and then if it's a culvert, then a condition rating for the culvert, so they say they're looking for four or less on those. So I looked at one oh seven, and it pretty much has all fives, three fives and one six, so that's not four or less. So then, um, KDOT said it'd be, you know, it's still fracture critical, um, it's a decent structure, but if you have other structures worse than this. To apply with that also into a second application, um, so if there's money for, they're gonna rate both of them, um, if there's money for both of them, uh, one will get selected, whichever one we want. But there may not be, pretty much selecting another bridge that's worse than this one that has, um, a worse condition rating. So I sat down and I sorted the data, and so I sorted it by your sufficiency rating and also your condition ratings. And I highlighted the fours or less. And this, so I may need some guidance from you guys on which ones you actually want, um, but here's some of the highlighted structures. The first one that showed up was a hundred-foot, uh, fracture critical steel truss that had a current posting of three tons, um, and it was off-system twelve. And it has an ADT of twenty. So that's something that, you know, I'm gonna ask for some info, you know, are, are some of these structures a higher priority, do they have a feedlot by them or? Yes, off-system one twenty.
That one twelve, one, you said?
Yeah, one twelve, sorry.
That's that, where the rocky, that low water crossing there, Rocky Hill Road, no, is that where that is?
It's south and east of Lincoln.
Yeah, I think that's the low water crossing, well, maybe not, I'm not sure.
Maybe the one north of there.
Oh, it's the one north of there, and that, that little bridge, oh, that is an old bridge, there, oh, yeah.
Right.
I can see that being, I'm surprised that you guys hadn't closed it down already.
Right, but it's.
You know where it is, where Vernon Lopez has his little feedlot there. Yeah, you know.
So if it's closed within, I wanna say twelve or twenty-four months, then yeah, you can, once it's been closed for so long, then maybe.
I used to all math, I said that thing.
So the bridges that are closed, yeah, no, cause they're not a bridge, or they're closed, so it's not in KDOT.
Contention, cause there are bridges, like the one where McBride's live, that bridge has been closed for a long time, is that not even on this list?
Yeah, so if it's closed, then we're not doing, this was all the ones we inspected, so I guess that's why I'm asking for you guys' input, um, so if there's.
Any other contractors have a suggestion as far as bridges that's been brought to their attention, even if they're closed?
But that road used to be used a lot, but the bridge.
Maybe the Bri- River Bridge, south, north of house? That's open, isn't it?
It's been closed for years, you have to go all the way basically to the, you know, that, where that.
Yeah.
That water plant is.
I don't know where that is on there.
But it's not, it doesn't show, it, it's not part of the, it's not even part of the question, cause I think we're close to, they closed the bridge.
Oh.
But it deserves to be open, that's, that's.
I think there's.
Busy, that could be a busy road again.
I think there's another program years back where you could close one, get more money to replace another one, so, yeah.
Yeah, I know where that is, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we'd have to open it again.
So I think, yeah, I.
Well, no, I mean, you'd be rebuilding, right?
Yeah.
That would be rebuilding.
Yeah, and I think it's been closed within so many months, you can still use it, but if it's been over so long, then I think it's.
It's been.
And I haven't checked with KDOT on that one.
There would be a lot of farmers who would be really happy to have that bridge open.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of bridges that we need to fix.
So where's it at? I could maybe look back to see, you know, our files and the bridge file.
Here, I'll show you on here, on the planet.
Let's see.
If it's to be.
You call it Spillman Creek Bridge?
Where the river?
Is that the Spillman Creek Bridge you're talking about?
No, this one's on the river, just north of Rick McBride's house, about half mile, and that'd be a big bridge, a river, over the river.
Right.
Maybe ninety-two or ninety-eight on there. That's on the river, I think, isn't it? I could show you better, I don't know, it's a hundred fiftieth street, hundred fiftieth road there.
Oh, okay, ninety-eight, looks like ninety-eight.
Yeah, so.
That's an off-system.
About a hundred fiftieth road and, uh, the river. Well, there you go, we got, you know, there's a lot of bridges that could be used, but we only have some, certain amount of money, certain amount to do all this stuff.
Well, if it's the difference between opening a bridge that's been closed but would really benefit if people could pay the taxes, over one that can still be used. I think reopening a road would be better than.
Yeah, well, you may, you got, what do you have, like, you have like twenty or thirty or fifty, fifty bridges, right?
Yeah.
We have money for, what, one or two a year.
Right.
Now, the small ones with the culverts, of course, you could fix, or the low water bridges maybe, but for the bigger, anything twenty-foot or bigger is a real bridge. And you're talking fifty to a hundred grand or more, right, depends on how big it is, right?
Yeah, it just depends how, how big.
So you gotta prioritize here, and Roma, you got a good point here, I'm not saying you don't, it's just, we probably have twenty in a county, maybe, not twenty, but maybe five to ten.
This is one that.
I know, it's a major one.
People are going way out of their way to get to their fields.
That ain't on the river, that's open up in the crust, isn't it? Maybe, no, I haven't, that's, you're right.
Would you say it was that?
That's open, over the river there.
I got a Laquonio down there.
Cause I took that, I've taken that bridge straight north to look at the Spillman, where the Spillman, you guys closed down, I don't know, you guys put it, because they were worried about the stones. Getting too close to one fifty, this is washing out, Michael put out, uh, some road close signs, because some farmers were mad because they wanted to drive through there.
Oh.
Right there by eighteen highway, eighteen highway, one fifty.
Okay, okay, now I know what you're talking about.
I'm not even sure this one shows it.
I'm not either, I'm not sure exactly.
I don't think that even shows the bridge, cause.
Well, I'm not sure, mother, where you're talking about. Well, whatever, we, we got, you know, you could, we could, a lot of these, you know, who's.
Thing we have only a month, so we really need to narrow this down and give him some instruction.
Well, well, what would your, you're the expert here, what would you?
So I, I.
I don't know nothing about it.
I sorted, um, the data, um, I found a bridge that's a hundred-foot long, so it, it had some like twenty to thirty to forty footers. I know the county's, I gave them kind of a generic set of. Um, I know the county's, you know, I gave them kind of a generic set of plans for thirty footers. And so if the county's wanting to maybe do some of these themselves, um, so I, I found a hundred footer, um, this is getting pretty big. Um, this one has three tons posting, it is fracture critical, um, and it's got a super and a substructure condition rating of four. Um, it's off system one twelve.
That one oh two, you showed it?
That was, yeah, or the one twelve, the one southeast of town. So that's the first one that came up when I sorted them.
You need direction from us to say, go ahead with that?
Right, exactly. So if, if you guys want another, so I plan on also using the last times one oh seven, submitting that. K dot said it'd probably be good since Lincoln County has a lot of structures in bad condition to replace.
Alexis, you were saying we only have a month here to determine this?
Yeah, so the deadline is.
Why's that?
Uh, so they.
Is that our budget for the year?
It's the grant deadline.
Oh, the grant deadline, okay.
Yeah, so they set a deadline.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's August, August sixteenth.
Well, you have a priority deadline. And you, you determine this is a very critically dangerous one that needs fixed, needs attention to, right?
Yes, three tons, yeah.
I know where it is.
I just, I don't want to do one, and you guys are, why don't you do this other one? It's a higher priority. You guys have more, you talk to the locals and stuff a little bit more than I do.
Well, I, yeah, well, I think, do we need a motion to tell him to do this, Alexis?
Not necessarily a motion, but do we need another week to discuss? I mean, I.
Well, how do you know, you have a month yet to do it, before the grant would run out?
Yeah, usually, um, like one oh seven, I called like the school and the post office, and there was a mail route and a bus route, so I got letters of support from them. Um, K dot says that does make your application look better. Um, so it'd be nice to have, you know, a week or two to be able to call some of these people.
Seven or one oh, one twelve?
Uh, one oh seven.
Which is where?
It's down
South of Corksite. Oh, oh, I know where that is, yeah.
It's like a sixty or seventy foot.
That's on the Bullfoot, the Bullfoot Creek there. Okay, they're by, uh, Dan Hean's. Well, either that or that one twelve, they're both the good, they're both got serious critical problems.
Right.
That one, it'd be, be addressed. Well, the one with the bus route and the, uh, that one's a mail route too, one twelve mail route, because I've taken that.
Okay.
But, uh, we, uh, we could put it off a week yet, like, to discuss this, Alexis, you want to do that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's some additional input that we may have, I mean, we could email it or, you know, get any information we want over to Dawn, I suppose. I don't, I don't necessarily have a suggestion off the top of my head, I'm just saying.
No, I, I don't either. I, I just go by what Tanner says here, his recommendations, because they're the most critical in need of fixing. We have a month to get this, use this grant, so we got to determine one of these.
Yeah, and I can leave you all this data and stuff and.
Maybe you should. And we can, Monday, you'll be here, Alexis, Monday, right, next week?
Uh, yeah.
Me, me too. So maybe we could review that a little better and then, I thought, I think either one of these is probably deserving. I don't know, one's more deserving than, than the other, do you?
I don't know about you.
Yeah, they're both being fixed, they both think fixed.
Right, right.
So we'll pick one of them.
Okay. And if you want me to, I'll check my schedule, but if it's open on Monday and you want me to come, I can come here and steal one of these.
You want him to come back in next Monday, Alexis?
We can just, we can, we can mail him or email him.
Or email him, tell you what we decided.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, then you don't have to come in for that.
That.
We've explained it well here. I'll put all this on your pile, Alexis.
Thank you.
And then here's, so here's the application for one oh seven we did, here's a blank one that I'll have to fill out. And also, I guess, here's a letter we got from the state.
Okay. I'll put all this on here too, in one place. We'll review it next Monday and make a decision.
Okay.
Before your, before, with, before the, uh, deadline runs out.
Okay. Lots of stuff going on.
Now, when you say this, we just have to, we have to have the application into the state for get grant money. When, work being done, maybe six months, a year?
Yeah, so it's federal fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So it's going to be, if you get it selected, then it's going to take a year to design it. It'll be all survey, gets right away acquisition, um, and then, uh.
Might be two years.
Yeah, it'll be two years.
So it's that far out?
Right, yeah, yeah. So it's, it's a little ways out. Eighty-seven, I think we got selected two years before that one happened.
We've got to go through all the.
Yep, K DAS got pretty much a checklist.
Sure, all the procedures and the policies and the.
Right.
Biocentric.
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything else?
So let's see here. Okay, so it's the off system call for projects. Um, while we're talking about bridges, um, I've got a contract for the annual inspections. Um, so there's actually Um, so in the bridge, when we inspect the bridges, on the bridge report, it comes up with yearly inspections. Um, so this showed we had four of them. Um, so the condition range is probably a three or less. Um, so there's some requirements that the state requires that annual inspections be done of them.
Three out of a five?
Uh, so it's four, it's actually four out of all of them. So four of them have a condition rating of less than or equal to three, so now the state requires that an annual inspection be completed.
What's that, what's the scale? What's the three under?
Um, so.
Is it a ti- five the highest or a ten?
Ten, ten.
Oh, a ten, so we're three, so we're pretty low.
Yes.
That's not good, right?
Yeah, usually a new bridge is a nine or ten.
Okay.
Or an eight, right up there.
All right.
So three's getting pretty, I think if it's two or less, I think they may require you to close it. So, um.
Okay.
So the state acts, the county used to do annual inspections and stuff when it gets that bad. So I have a contract, uh, we did them last time, so it's the same price.
You need that today?
Of the renewal?
Yeah, so pretty much it's just, you sign it, I think they're due in October. Um, so if I just have it signed by October, or you, you guys can take and review it or.
Yeah, you could leave that here too.
Yeah, all this, two of them, so you guys will sign one and keep it for your records, and then I'll need a copy for my records.
Okay, we'll put them here in the pile again. Okay. We have a big pile, Alexis, with the, I could, uh, well, I could keep till next week, so we just don't want to lay in here all this stuff, but we'll keep it in one place.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Well, there you go. We got a combination for it?
Inspection is off system. Okay, so last time I was down, Michael and I went and looked at, uh, structure on Ride Drive. Have you, are you guys familiar with it?
Yeah.
Okay, it's pretty, pretty bad shape, uh, they put some barricades up.
Way up by Hunter, right there?
You what?
Way up by Hunter?
Yeah.
No, not that far north, okay. Northwest though, right?
It's just north of my house.
Oh, okay. Not that far west.
Yeah, it's, it's only about two and a half miles.
Well, I'm not familiar with it, I was thinking it's something different.
It's about two and a half miles off of.
Okay, I'm not familiar, anyway, what?
So here's some map.
It's north of my house, about two and a half miles off of fourteen.
That's, that's not on right.
It is on right, I'm not on right, but.
His problem is.
Yes, there should be a point on that, uh, Google Earth map showing where it's at. And here's a little closer, so I think, uh, Mr. Freezen lives there, just south of there.
Oh, Freezen, yeah.
Yeah, so we were able to, we kind of tracked him down, were able to meet with him. He's still wanting to be able to run his cattle through there. Um, so right now it's like a ten foot span by like fourteen foot at the peak of the arch, um, structure, so he's got some pens on the south side, and I think he owns property on both sides. He likes to run his cattle through there, and he'd still like to be able to keep that, be able to run his cattle under the roadway. Um, so I, I ran the hydraulics, the structure is really oversized, so we could put something a lot smaller in there. Um, after speaking with him, uh, we discussed the option of putting a railroad tanker, a ten foot diameter, not a half one, a full one, um, and then sinking it like a foot, so then the bottom of that tanker's dirt, so if his cattle run through, they're not slipping and falling and stuff. Um, and then getting a sixty footer, so we've got sixty footer right away in there. The thing is, the, I think from the channel to the roadway is like almost twenty foot, so it's a pretty big opening. Um, so if we took a, you know, if we, if we put a ten foot diameter pipe in there and have it about sixty foot long, um, we'd still have to slope down, you know, from twenty down to ten, and we still have to drive kind of like a wall, like a sheet pile wall, um, to kind of keep, you know, all that stuff away from his pens and stuff and stay on the county right away.
Have you seen that bridge?
Here's pictures of it. And that's the structure, you can see the damage.
Have you ever seen that?
I don't think I have, no.
Well, it's a structure you have, look, coming from the west, you got, and you're coming off a hell of a steep hill.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
You probably need to start your cut, probably a hundred yards farther west. I don't know how you're going to, I already don't know how you're going to make that work.
Right, because there's a lot of rock there. I'm sure they just followed the rock.
Yeah.
So you would take this out?
Yeah, so we would remove that whole structure.
Remove all this, but put in a, put in any of what you're wanting to put in, you said?
Yeah.
That structure's not sound anymore.
Yeah, so we were going to, talked about repairing it, going in there and driving sheet pile, but it's like, I don't think we want people banging on stuff right by it. We're scared the whole thing's going to come down. So we closed it, uh, for now. Um, so, yeah, so that's what we're thinking. We're thinking a ten foot diameter, um, railroad tanker. Uh, we got some, an email from the railroad yard. General purpose, purpose tank, uh, ten foot diameter, sixty foot wide, has a point four five inch wall thickness, um, and then they would cut a head wall for it that we can tire sheet piling into, um, and it's seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And then the other option was a pressure car, um, it's a little bit thicker wall thickness, uh, fifty-nine point five foot, and it's the same price, seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty.
What's the, uh, load rating or the tonnage that it can handle?
Oh, that, that's a good question. So I looked at that, um, since we're going to have probably seven, ten foot of fill, it's, it's legal loads.
Oh.
So typically we, it's two foot, and you put two foot over these structures to be able to meet legal loads, so it won't even be posted or anything.
Okay.
That holds a lot of harvest traffic.
Right.
That's the only good road between, actually, Ash Grove Road and fourteen.
Right, yeah.
That's the only through road.
Yeah, yeah.
That gets you over the highway, that's it.
So then again, it's like, you know, can the county do this themselves? Uh, I spoke to some of the guys and they kind of feel like they don't have the equipment to be able to, uh, drive all the piling and that kind of stuff. That's what an excavator was brought up. Uh, so do we want to, you know, send it up to bid to a contractor? Uh, do you want me to put up some plane sheets together and some bid docs? Um, I guess I'm curious, what, what do you guys want to do with this, this structure?
Is there a deadline date for doing any of this stuff?
No, it's just getting the road opened back up sooner.
And you can go around it, but. You got a dirt.
Hello?
Since you can go around.
I'm sorry, my phone died.
Okay, your phone died. Well, Tanner's just talking, Tanner's just, I don't know where you dropped off, but Tanner's talking about this road on what street?
It's Ride Drive.
Ride Drive, uh, this old, uh, limestone structure currently, but, but he's promoting to, uh, put a different, like a train car ride up for, in other words, about how to fix this road, what, what technique to do. I don't know, where did you drop off, Alexis? Alexis, you there?
I was only gone.
Okay. Well, you're dropping off a little bit here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I'm just, I had poor signal and my battery died, so I, I heard most of what he said there, I was just gone for a minute. I called right back.
He was wanting to know, since he didn't, he talked to our highway department guys and, and they didn't think maybe they could do it ourselves because of the piling issue, we don't, probably can't handle that, so we want to know if we should put out bids to get this done. Do you have any input on that?
I have not seen it, so I, I guess we should just do what we did with the bridge to the west there, um, which was just bid out the piling. Actually, I think we got them to do two at once when they came last time, they were, I, no, I take that back, they were already working on the bridge, uh, up the road, I think it was eighty-seven, so they went ahead while they had their equipment and drove the pile for the one, I believe it was one oh five.
Yeah, so that was a little bit of different structure type. Um, this one's going to be a ten foot diameter pipe, that one oh five was a steel beam structure. Um, you know, we could do a steel beam also, could be a structure type, um, yeah. But we would have to, you know, drive some pile.
So could you get a, an idea of what exactly needs done so that we had something to bid out?
Yeah, and if you want me to, I can, I can put together a set of plans.
Maybe bid request, you said, right?
Right, yeah, so typically I think it's over, if it's over twenty-five thousand, the county is supposed to go out for bids. Um, so yeah, I can, I can put together kind of some maybe proposed designs, and we can go forward with the design and then go out to bid. Yeah, so this, that's what I'm just looking for, direction on, is that what we want to do? I can put together some designs and, and we can go, and next time I need, I can show you them.
I think that'd be good, don't you, Alexis?
Are you able, are you able to design something that we can just bid out the piling and what needs done and just get up to the point where our own crew can do the superstructure of it?
Yeah, so, uh, typically, uh, we show the whole project, and then we show the pieces Yeah, so, uh, typically, uh, we show the whole project, and then we show the pieces that the county forces are gonna be to complete. So if you guys wanna take the old structure out, um, and then, you know, remove all the rock and, and get the road ready and everything, and then you could have the contractor, you know, set the pipe, and then, uh, drive all the sheet piling, and then the county could do the dirt work themselves. Yeah, that, that can be something we've done in the past, if the county wants to do a portion of it. So we could break that out.
Probably save us some money.
Right, right.
Well, I think at this point, that would be our tactic, to get done what needs to be done outside of our scope and ability, and then continue on with our own bridge crew, because that way we could get two or three of those working at the same time, rather than just devoting all of our resources to subbing out the entire project.
Okay. So yeah, I can, you know, I can put together kind of proposal on, you know, what I would do, and maybe list, show what we would, you know, what the contractor could do, and maybe get with, uh, Michael and them, say, hey, can you guys do this? That kinda stuff, and then make a list of, okay, the contractors to perform this, and then we could...
We could have a department perform this.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
This is gonna be more complicated, you have a bridge, you have such a difference in elevation on the west side and east side.
Yes, yes.
This isn't gonna be cheap, no matter how you do it.
Right, 'cause that ten-foot, I think there's like, like seventeen foot from the bottom of the channel to the roadway. So we put a ten-foot structure in, so now we gotta slope down seven foot, and then we'd have our walls on each side, our ten-foot walls. And then your sheet piling, you really need to support it every so often, so you probably need to drive in each pile, and maybe put some whalers, they call them, between them. So, 'cause that sheet pile, if you don't put that, it starts bowing out. And then, so it's, there's gonna be a little bit to it.
Do you design that?
Yeah, 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 we can, we can.
Well, that's probably the best option, don't you think, to do that?
I think so, I think so.
Okay.
We were kinda throwing around some other ideas, and it's like, I think this is probably gonna be the best, doing this tanker. And then the county could order the tanker and have it really easily delivered to the site. I don't think they have, like, uh, equipment to be able to move it, a crane and stuff, so you'd have to have L and M, that could be part of the contractor, for him to move that pipe around.
Okay. Now why don't we pursue, looking into doing that?
Okay.
Don't you think Alexis?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not familiar with the location, and I'm not well-versed enough to say that it would be cheaper for the county to finish out the project, but that would be something to discuss with the bridge crew, and, you know, figure out what we have on the list. Because if it's not that much more expensive to go ahead and have the whole project done, then maybe we need to consider that as well.
Now, could you get a cost estimate on that, if they do the whole thing?
Yeah, we can.
Versus if we help out part of it, if we can, if we don't save much, I agree with Alexis, we might as well just have it all done, bid it out.
Right.
But if we can save a substantial amount by doing part of it ourselves, then maybe we'll do that.
Yeah, I can, I can put together, you know, a cost estimate, and then usually have like dirt work, or the county does the dirt work, or save themselves thirty thousand or something. I can put some different...
Okay, good, that'd be good.
Now, I have another thought on that now, he wants to use that for moving his cows through there, he's done for a hundred years. Would there be some opportunity for the farmer to cost share, because he probably will need to redo some of that concrete, right? His cows come on now, uh, that's washed out too. Would you allow him to cost share?
Yeah.
Or put, as you're building it up, to put some concrete or anything to do there?
Yeah, if he wants to, I think he poured, according to Michael, he poured the concrete on the south side of that, it was scaring us. So we went and did that, if we put our tank in, yeah, we're probably gonna have to saw cut that and remove it. Yeah, if he wants to help out, yeah, that would be...
This would be an opportunity, but he would get the way he wants it along, right?
Yeah, can you coordinate with him too?
Uh, yeah, we, I can.
Talk to you about what we're planning on doing, and see his input on it too, what Jim just requested.
Yeah.
That'd be good. That way he's part of, will know what's going on here.
Okay.
And if he has questions or requests, we can go from there.
Right. Okay. Okay. And I can maybe leave pictures and stuff for Alexis. Leaving you guys a lot of information.
Well, that's okay, we'll just put it all in one thing, and I'll just keep it or I'll give it, I know Don probably don't wanna mess with it, she has it up here, I can keep it. What can you do, can we just file it with you, that way you have it, and then we come back, if I take it, I probably lose it. Very good, boy, you're a busy guy.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on in Lincoln County, Kansas is busy.
Any more, what else going on?
Um, we have a couple drain adjustments on some other structures we're replacing, the Sonny and Tractor has got it down today. Let's see, eighty-seven, so off system eighty-seven is not quite finished yet. Uh, the northwest landowner had some concerns with the amount of dirt that was removed, um, so we're working with them to see if the contractor took too much. So eighty-seven's open as a public, but it's not closed out yet in K-Dog, so they've had a few cleanup items to do. So he reached out to me and called me, and we're working with the contractor and get some of those issues addressed, if you guys care about anything. Let's see, the landfill, um, I know, let's see, a couple months ago, um, we presented a contract to do some work at the landfill, and we go out and survey the whole site. Um, I'm just was bringing it up, I didn't know if you guys need to look at it, um, we had talked about spacing the workout over a couple of years, 'cause it probably doesn't need to happen ASAP, it's more, get everything surveyed, get the plans put together, 'cause KG seems like they're coming out with more and more regs. And so, if you can get some plans approved by then, and kinda grandfathered into, into all that. So I didn't know, I had that here, I don't know if Jim, if you've seen it, but, uh, I'm just, I didn't know if you guys had...
Just to look at that.
Just to upgrade Jim on this, this is, you were wanting to get more cells out there for the landfill, uh, the west of the, you know, where, right? And to get that approved and authorized, and you have to do the survey and all, and get it all set up. You know, also, we dealt with, this is a different issue, kind of, it's right up there where the farmer, lease, the farm around there, we, we did that lease to give us five, four and a half acres, we're gonna use for dirt, Michael was asking for extra dirt from the projects in the county. So we approved that too, I don't know if that's none of your, none of your involvement, but I just wanted to update you.
So that would just be when, if the design takes place, we'd, okay, don't put a cell in this area if we're gonna be stealing dirt from it.
Yeah, well, that's maybe something we need to coordinate about, yeah, because we just signed a new lease to, to do that.
Right, okay.
So somebody'd have to coordinate, make sure what we're doing on that.
So we'd probably like a copy of that lease, and then we can show where the...
Don has it, we just signed it earlier today. It's on that west, northwest side of that farmland up there, next to your cells, where you have your cells laid out, or what would be projected of those.
Yeah.
But okay, so you need from us then today, do you need something?
I don't need anything today, I was just seeing if you guys had read it, or if, uh, you know, we put some like, this is be completed in sixty days, you know, we could space that out. It's just up to you guys.
No, you're saying we should get something, and give it to, uh, appropriate people, so we can get some likes, some of it set up, so that we're grandfathered in if they start changing rules and regulations?
Yeah, so we did this, uh, I do this for Clark County and Southwest Kansas, and so we went out and did this with them, um, to get plans approved and everything approved, so when it goes down the road, we've got an approved set, they're not having to abide by new. Some of the things may be like, if you gotta close a cell, you gotta have so many inches of fill over the top of it, it's gotta meet all these requirements, so if they approve this, then...
So what you would do is, get us, set this all up now, with all those rules, regs, and how we're doing it, so when we do that, we have, we get ready to go. We wouldn't have to go back and revisit it.
Right, yeah, 'cause right now, I think the design shows one or two cells, doesn't show the rest of the lot. So it'd have to be designed before you can dig a new cell or anything like that.
Okay.
So, there's this, um... Yeah, if you have any questions on it or anything, or need any changes, if you want your attorney to look at it, just, just let me know.
Yeah, well, thanks a lot, that's, yeah, we got it. And if, we got a lot going on, so keep reminding us if we push this to the back burner, saying, hey, we need to address this.
Right.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up, 'cause we got a lot of irons that were fired.
Right. And I think that's pretty much it for today.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry it took so long.
No, you had a lot.
Ask for two hours next time.
Well, you had a lot of information.
Yeah.
You had a lot of...
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, if anything comes up, uh, you guys have my name and number, and...
And we'll review all this paperwork you gave us down these bridges and, uh, all this stuff, and, uh, thank you for doing all this.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
But, uh...
So I'm looking forward to looking at that list he provided us as a breakdown of structure options, and then taking the mobile three-one-one program, looking where we need different structures, what sizes they are, and then trying to plug in some numbers and some ideas.
Yeah, sounds good. In other words, take pictures with the three-one-one of all of our bridges.
Well, let's say, right, let's say, you know, in one particular, let's say one particular township, we have six different bridges that need addressed. We can take the list he gave us, and look at each option, and look at the dollar amount for each location. And then we can prioritize where the money's gonna be spent in that specific area, and how.
Yeah, sounds good, in other words, we might give up...
It'll help us, it'll help us look at our budget more realistically, instead of just throwing a number out there and saying, well, you know, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, that sounds fine Alexis. That'd give us a plan, maybe a little more organized plan of attack here on this stuff.
Yeah.
Or coming up with a list of prioritized structures, and we can estimate us around costs, and use it for budgeting and that kinda stuff.
And like, and like she said too, if you're in one area, if you're in the southwest part of the county, there might be two, if we're over there already with all of our, all of our people and all of our stuff, well, let's do two while over there, he'll go from Barnard down, go from Barnard to Lake Wilson, and then down to Westfall and up to Hunter.
Right.
If you can be, if we can help it.
Yeah, and then like one oh five, we had a contract to drive pile, or if we have five projects, they could kinda drive the pile for all of them.
Right, right.
And you don't know how to pay mobilization five times.
A little more organization, just to try to be more efficient, that's, save us money, and that's all, that's, we all should be trying to save the county money, 'cause we're all paying taxes there.
And I think Michael's been watching steel prices too, 'cause I know we have a standard beam size, and when the steel prices are low, he may buy in bulk, help with that too, so...
Okay.
Okay, and I'll leave the spreadsheet with Don.
And I'll give, yeah, Don this stuff too, anything else Alexis you got for Tanner?
Not for me, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks Tanner.
Thank you.
Thanks Liz, again, for coming in.
Okay, so do we have any further business to come before the board?
Yes.
Don?
The employee.
Yeah, we do with the one employee, Don said, uh...
Same when you make that your session?
Do, I don't know, Don, what do we need to do for that?
Um, no.
Okay, he's, she's busy right now with Tanner, I'm updating the computer here, so hang on a minute Alexis.
I think we're done, right?
No.
Well, I know that they're done. Who's people are we talking about?
This, this guy.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, it probably should be, um, well, let me just say this, um, so Gregory and I had said he hadn't got his six month, or his year increase. He is one that we did an evaluation for at six months, that if you remember, they were so strapped for time, that they just said, since they'd already done the evaluation, was that good? So I have that current evaluation that you've already based a six-month raise on. So the question is, is will you give it his year? And I guess if so, his year is twenty-five cents, and I'd have to look to see when it is effective. So do you wanna review the evaluation that we had six months ago?
Well, I, yeah, on a year, that's a time phase, and I think we oughta go ahead and do that, approve that.
Yeah.
It's not a performance evaluation, merit raise, it's one of the things that we can add on longevity. So I would say approve that, based on whatever you got.
Let me look and see what his data higher was, just to make sure. So his data higher was six-four, so his raise would have been effective six-twenty-six of eighteen, or of nineteen, for a twenty-five cents.
I think we should approve that.
Yeah, Alexis, have you, did you hear everything?
I can't quite hear what Don's saying, is he so far away?
Don said that, uh, effective what, June twenty-sixth?
It'd be June twenty-sixth effective.
June twenty-sixth of this year, he would have had a year, would be eligible for a year raise of twenty-five cents. And Jim request, recommended giving him that, do, should we make a motion to do that? Or do you have any discussion?
In June, he said?
Yeah, it was a June twenty-sixth.
This is the...
Yeah, and we already, we already reviewed the evaluation, so yeah, we need to do this for the set.
So June twenty-sixth, that would actually be this paycheck, so...
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, give, uh, Mr. Greg Nye, is that his name, right, the twenty-five cents an hour yearly increase?
I'll second.
Okay.
It is a motion seconded to approve the one-year twenty-five cent increase, is there any further discussion?
The only thing is, is in that motion, I'm just going to say year, not yearly.
Year, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, the, at the completion of one year.
Just completion of one year.
We don't need that every year.
Right. Yeah, Don, Don edited the motion, I guess I made, to say his, um, annual, or not annual, but...
A year.
The first year, yeah, one year raise.
Okay. As long as they all understand that, I will call for those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks Tanner, thanks Liz. Don, do you have anything? I guess we're done then Alexis.
All right, have a good day.
You too, I guess, next Monday.
And I would like to just reiterate, maybe, Don, if you would mail out that letter we signed please, from K-Dog.
Yes.
Or four-four, K-Dog, not from, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Alexis.
All right, I will turn until next Monday at ten AM.
Okay, goodbye.
Thank you, bye.